The Board of Education, the Board meeting of the Board of Education for May 26, 2020, is called to order. Teri, are you with us? For tonight's meeting, an item that will be voted on has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being streamed live on Channel 28 and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. Welcome to our viewing audience and fellow board members and staff. Tonight, we're looking to receiving a second briefing on the work underway in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. I know I've heard from many families. Oops, sorry about that. We'll get some updates on that work as well as have the major presentation of our proposed budget. We'll also hear a bit about the experiences of our seniors, including hopefully Maxine. So first order of business is our business agenda. At this time, we'll vote on the business agenda. Board members, are there any items you would like to pull for discussion?
I have a couple of questions relating generally to contracts.
Okay, do you want to pull the items or shall we vote on the business agenda and then follow up with the questions?
I want to call the mercy rule for Emily. So if I can ask them, if I could just ask now versus having her wait till the end of the session? Great, thank you. So my question is around just contracts as they're coming to the board and how services are being provided. So we have our general employment contracts for our employees for labor. And then we have a second set of contracts which all relate to just service providers who provide services on a contractual basis. So my question, and these are just generally as we roll into the next school year and have a host of contracts that are going to be coming before us. We didn't have a lot of flexibility this year, obviously, because of the pandemic. And also, some of them, the governor had made some decisions. But my questions, my first question is, are contract managers monitoring remote performance of contractors? And will PPS receive near-end reports?
Hi, Julia. Sorry, I did not hear the last part of your question.
I said, so that it was our contract managers monitoring remote performance of contractors? And will PPS receive near-end reports in those cases in which they're required?
Yes, I mean, the expectations around contractors are the same as they would be during if PPS schools were open. However, we have advised all of our contract managers that if work cannot be performed, then our contractor should not be billing for services. And we won't pay for work that was not performed. Some of our contract managers have revised their scopes of work to include remote provision of services. That's more the exception than the rule. But when they've done that, they still have the obligation to monitor that service and ensure that it was completed as stated in this.
So that was sort of my second question related to for when contractors aren't able to perform the services. It sounds like we're either modifying the scope or not terminating the contract, but not paying for services that weren't provided. Are we, is that centrally being collected somewhere so that we have a system-wide perspective of those contracts in which we're not paying or we've changed the scope?
So we certainly, any change in scope should be in amendment, which is certainly centrally kept and approved and goes through our standard process. For some of the contracts, we've had contract managers have my department do early termination if they just want it to be really clear that this work is now over. But we have also advised that that's not necessarily necessary because in every invoice that our accounting department receives, the contract manager needs to verify and sign off that the work was actually completed before that invoice even goes to our accounting department to pay.
So at some place in the enterprise contract management system, there would be a record of whether we modified the contract, either modified it or paid less than we had anticipated?
Right. What we'll find is a whole lot of contracts that have a remaining encumbrance at the beginning of this year because so much of that work was never done. And as we close out the fiscal year, that encumbrance will be released.
Okay, and then just my last question is, thank you, by the way, is if we look at next year and the fact that there's a possibility that it's not going to, it may not be a normal school year or that we may be open late or open with distance learning and shift to in-class or in-building learning. I'm wondering if all our contracts for this fall have, are going to have built into them the flexibility that say if we move to like a staggered class schedule or they need to provide the services in a different way, whether we'll modify our contracts so that we can be more nimble and that we don't end up having a mismatch of services provided not at the time or manner in which we need them?
Sure. And that's really a scope question. And because we've had a purchasing and a contracting freeze, I haven't seen most contracts yet that will go forward for this next fiscal year. But I would expect that some of our contract managers for those kinds of contracts that provide student services specifically will address that in their scope. We do always have termination provisions in our contracts that allow for unilateral termination. And again, we don't allow billing for work that's not done. So there's a number of safeguards there. But I would expect our contract managers to address the new reality in when they put together the scopes for this coming fiscal year.
And sorry, just one last one, because I didn't realize this. So if we have a contracting freeze, it doesn't relate to capital projects because we're still voting on like facility-related contracts. But so it's only on the sort of operational side that we have a contracting freeze?
So all kind of capital projects and maintenance and operational things have been allowed to go forward because they're crucial during this time. But most everything else has been.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else not hear anything?
Amy just hopped off and she'll get back in again. She's having technical difficulty still. She said everything is sounding like we're all Mickey Mouse.
Thank you, Haley.
Amy, we still can't hear you.
Only I could do a Mickey Mouse.
Is anybody else hearing that really strange like echoey?
That's when the phone and the computer are too close to each other and both the volumes run.
I also received a text from Director Moore that she's not able to participate at all right now. So she's, I think, going to try to log back in again.
I think the weird echo is just how Scott always sounds.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm so sorry about that. Rita, could you make sure that you have the script handy so that if I get, if I keep having audio problems, you can carry on?
Rita's not on.
She's on.
Did you hear me, Rita?
Rita had to get off the phone. Amy, she's having some technical problems right now.
Okay. So Roseanne, also with the script here, can you tell me the resolutions on the business agenda that we're voting on right now? Make sure this is accurate.
It is. I just checked.
Okay, the board will now vote on Resolution 6114 through 6120 in the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 Amy, we didn't have a motion. We need a motion in a second. Sorry.
We got a little flustered there when I had to meet that virtual room, Liz. Okay, do I have a motion? I heard Director Bailey moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Director DePass seconds for the adoption of the business agenda. The board will now vote on Resolution 6114 through 6120 in the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? The business agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student representative Lateral voting.
Yes.
All right. Okay, we were going to move on to the superintendent's report, but Superintendent McNamara, Maxine does have a brief student report for us this evening.
It's okay if I talk for like two minutes. I promise it won't be longer than that. I promise. I promise. Um, yeah, so I just wanted to hop on and say hi. It's me. Almost a graduated senior. Very cool. Excited for college. I get to go to college, which is really exciting, like physically go. And I just wanted to provide a little update on the Grant Merrill situation as this was something that I was working on a lot before COVID, you know, before COVID. And I just wanted to say that for our grant community and especially for the Native American Student Union at Grant, just like an update that there isn't going to be a resolution. And so the board, like we won't be doing it in a board meeting since it isn't a policy issue. And instead, the superintendent will approve it, which is very cool. So I just wanted to provide that as an update and also say it's really great that students are getting to like go to our schools and pick up our stuff. I'm excited to get my yearbook next week and see a couple of my teachers. And when I was able to go get my cap and gown, it was really nice to just like wave at all of my teachers and their masks. And I'm looking forward to whatever my commencement ceremony is. I know it's going to be very different, but I'm still excited to graduate and wear my cap and gown, wear that maroon. Super excited about that. And I might look clumsy, but that's okay with me at this point. So that's just my little update. That's it. Thanks for letting me talk.
Thanks, Max.
Thank you, Maxine.
Chair of Pomstown, would you like me to share? Roseanne, can I be heard? I'm having a little technical difficulty.
I can hear you.
I can hear you as well.
All right. Good evening, directors, and for everybody listening at home catching tonight's regular meeting livestream. We're coming off an extended four-day weekend if you employ a PPS and coming off of Memorial Day weekend. I just want to acknowledge and pay my respects to all our servicemen and women who served and sacrificed for our country and for our freedoms. It's also a unique time because we have the pandemic circumstance and we have a lot of impacted lives there as well. I just want to acknowledge that. For my report tonight, I just want to recognize we have a pretty action-packed and dense agenda this evening. The main entree consists of a strategic plan update. Where are we in the development of it? We agreed with board leadership. It would be important to provide that context as we get into a conversation about our resources. And tonight, per the budget calendar, is the evening when we share our proposed budget. So we'll provide an update date there. It is a changing financial situation and we'll highlight those changes as well. So as is usually the case in my superintendent reports, like to call out a few other important nuggets. First of all, following Maxine's report there, want to acknowledge our Class of 2020, who we know is bearing the brunt of most of this pandemic and the disruption to our typical rituals, which usually comes with a lot of traditions and honors and celebrations. And acknowledge that they, as high school seniors, have, you know, working toward this moment for their entire K-12, pre-K-12 experience. So we're not experiencing those typical activities at this time as we maintain and observe physical distancing requirements and physical or public health guidelines. So we won't be, and it shouldn't surprise people, unfortunately, can't host those large group gatherings. But I am, I do want to make sure and describe tonight a few alternatives. They're not the same thing, but certainly our team working with our high school principals, school leaders, as well as some students have a few activities that we have already started promoting. The first is hosting a virtual prom next Thursday evening. The prom plans include social media challenges, messages from celebrities, prize packages, two hours of music from DJ OG, who you may recognize from the Trailblazers the last several years. The second activity we're hosting for our seniors are diploma days. On June 8th, 9th, and 10th, students will be assigned time slots to come by their high school campuses and receive their diplomas. And if they haven't already, their cap and gown. We will have professional photographers on site for graduates to have their photos taken. Details and logistics are being provided by high schools to each of their respective seniors. Thirdly, we know it's a real piece of memory to have the commencement program with your name listed. PPS is going to continue to produce traditional commencement programs for students and families to commemorate the occasion. We're also creating virtual programs for every high school. So you can see an example on the screen of what one might look like. And then lastly, we're creating a Class of 2020 videos for every high school. So this will include a collage of school performing arts groups, messages from principals, valedictorians, and a rolling list of graduates and honors. These videos, once they're completed, will be shown on Comcast Channel 28, available on the PPS YouTube channel, and will be available for download by our graduates and their families. So we're incredibly proud of our seniors. We hope that all of them will participate in these activities, which we've had to adjust in unique ways in this last semester and at the close of their careers in PPS. And I look forward to the many ways we intend to continue honoring and celebrate them over the next few weeks and beyond. Moving on, just a quick little update on home-based distance learning and where we are at this point. As you know, we're continuing with our educators and students across all grades in virtual classrooms and lessons. Our nutrition hubs continue to serve our students. And along with district and community leaders, continue to advocate for continued support. PPS HD, our home-based distance learning program, now in its eighth week. I continue to be amazed by the creativity that our educators and administrators are demonstrating in their attempts to keep our students engaged and continuing to provide some continuity and education to our students. Of course, we acknowledge there remain challenges. This is an effort that was rolled out almost overnight and without much of a runway. We've heard a range of feedback and thank you for sending those our way. And we've also learned that some students and families have expressed that in some ways, there were, there have been some benefits to this experience, which we'll also learn from. I continue to say that this online learning experience alone will never be an adequate substitute for in-person, face-to-face learning with our educators. But I do believe there are many ways in which we are getting better and better at this and appreciate sort of our teachers' efforts to maintain connection with students and among peers. So we're learning a tremendous amount. We continue to be grateful for everybody's patience, flexibility, and determination at this time. And kudos to our school administrators and central office staff supporting folks in this effort. We're continuing to provide meals at our nutrition hubs, where we're also distributing education kits and other learning materials. Information about and access to basic services and interpretation services are also there when needed. We're now at over 550,000 meals. That's over half million meals served in Portland Public Schools since we opened our nutrition hubs in March. So kudos to our nutrition services and all of our support staff who were there at those hubs, supporting that effort. And even though the demand has slowed, we continue to provide computers to any student who expresses a need for a device or for internet connectivity. And we are proceeding with that work in partnership with the Fund for PPS and Comcast. And speaking of our partner organization, next slide, the Fund for PPS. I want to share with all of you some exciting news. As you know, from the moment this crisis started, our PPS educators, like so many in our community, jumped into action, finding innovative, caring ways to center our communities most impacted. They're a living expression of what we hope for and all of our adults who support students. They're adaptive, caring, and community-minded. If those qualities sound familiar, it's because they're elements of our educator essentials from our very own vision. So thanks to so many educators and members of our community, the Fund for PPS has raised close to $30,000 in less than a week, with close to over 300 donors contributing an average of $95 to the coronavirus relief fund effort. And this was possible with support and partnership with the Portland Association of Teachers, who as an organization also made a generous contribution of $40,000 to help galvanize the community to also give. So that makes a total of an additional $70,000 and counting in support of PPS families. So thank you to PAT, to our educators, and to the generosity of the members of our community who've made that remarkable contribution possible for our needed students. Thank you. And speaking of thanking and recognizing our educators, if we could move on to the next slide. We've seen so many of our educators step up during this time this spring. No surprise, the creativity and the dedication that they continually express. And some of our best and brightest, as you know, there's an annual opportunity to recognize them. And I want to call out five individuals who teach here in the Portland Public Schools. Recall that the Oregon Teacher of the Year program is presented by the Oregon Department of Education in partnership with the Oregon Lottery. And part of the process involves identifying regional teachers of the year. And I'm proud to say that we have five PPS educators that we're recognizing who have been selected. The first of those is Madison High School's teacher, James Jeffrey West. He's been named a 2021 Oregon Regional Teacher of the Year. Mr. Jeffrey West is in his seventh year at Madison. It's his 22nd year as a teacher and one for the region covered by the Multnomah Education Service District. Mr. Jeffrey West is a social studies teacher. He's won a 15 regional winners who are now nominated for the Oregon Teacher of the Year Award. As you recall, Mercedes Munoz from Franklin High School won the statewide award last year. So congratulations to Mr. Jeffrey West. I believe he's watching this evening with his wife and children. Congratulations on this recognition. Mr. Jeffrey West has been a champion of ethnic studies, AP Psychology. He's worked on the Ethnic Studies Oversight Committee, and he's currently supporting the State of Oregon's effort on that content panel. So congratulations to James Jeffrey West. A number of PPS educators have been also honored by On Point Community Credit Union. Two PPS educators are finalists for Educator of the Year with them. Finalists will each receive a $5,000 cash award plus an additional $1,500 for their schools for resources and supplies. Educators of the Year winners will have their mortgages paid for one full year. Additionally, their schools will receive a $2,500 donation for resources and supplies. Ally Heron is a kindergarten teacher at Marysville Elementary. Here's some of what On Point said about Ms. Heron. Ally's ability to connect deeply with her students and provide the social-emotional support necessary to build trust and confidence in learning provides her kindergarteners with the foundational skills to succeed as they begin their journey as learners. Ally is a leader in mindfulness education, both at her school and in the Oregon education community. Congratulations, Ally Heron. Matt Sten, he's a modern world history and government economics teacher at Cleveland High School. Mr. Sten's award profiles states, "He teaches history as a story and provides students multiple ways to understand, explore, analyze, and create." Example projects include Oral History Portfolio, Capitalism vs. Communism, Autobiography on Malcolm X, and Latin American Hero Baseball Cards. He also regularly has guest speakers in his classroom, including Governor Brown, Senators Wyden, Jeff Merkley, and Steve Duren. He has coached speech and debate, hosted many clubs in his classroom at lunch, and led the charge to use the IB learner traits. In addition, two PPS educators were named to On Point's Circle of Excellence. They will receive a $1,500 cash award plus an additional $1,000 to their supplies for resources and supplies. Dr. Alfonso Garcia-Ariola, you may recognize him, often commended, is a seventh and eighth grade science teacher at Access Academy. Dr. Garcia-Ariola's honor profile states that his collaborative approach to teaching helps students learn to think like scientists with an understanding of what science is, as well as an understanding of what science is not. Projects are always hands-on, allowing students to form hypotheses, collect data, test theories, and investigate through firsthand experimentation. He's committed to student success and has mentored 32 teams in the Middle School Regional Science Bowl and coached students to more than 100 awards at the Intel Northwest Science Expo. He has also received numerous awards himself, including in 2017, he was a Science Communication Fellow for the Ocean Exploration Trust and the Robert E. Jaeger Excellence in Teaching Award. Congratulations, Dr. Alfonso Garcia-Ariola. And then lastly, Jesse Gardner teaches career and college exploration in hip-hop literature, also at Madison High School. Mr. Gardner's honor profile includes that he connects with his students using the lens of hip-hop music and culture to teach records, literature, and English. He reads mindfulness, restorative justice, and student voice eloquently into the routines, rhythms, and rituals of his classroom. Some of his amazing lessons include a name poem that students perform in front of their class, a literary analysis on Raising the Sun, a music review essay in Black History bio poems. Congratulations to these five outstanding PPS educators. We're very proud of you and grateful for your dedication and excellence in service of our students. Thank you. Next slide. We are in the month of May, and that makes it Mental Health Awareness Month. So we wanted to make sure and recognize that. What you see here is a screenshot of a video, Mental Health Matters, from our Student Success and Health Department. We shared the video across employee and school communities a couple of weeks ago. I'm grateful for the individuals and teams from the school base, the central office, who do this critical support work every day. Their role has changed a bit in the last two months, as you might imagine. But they, like so many others in the district, have adjusted and adapted and shown great creativity in how they're serving and supporting others. Providing the environment's programs and supports to facilitate student and staff mental health and wellness is essential. And we'll be talking a little bit more about that as we walk through our strategic plan update later this evening. This will continue to remain a central priority for us. Next slide. Wanted to say a few words. This pandemic that we're experiencing certainly has disrupted the norm for us and exacerbated some stress on the lives of our students, staff, and families. I know that families and students are anxious to know what the plans are for the fall. plans are for the fall. When will we return? How will it look when we return? And it's challenging to offer a concrete response to those questions, frankly, because we are continuing to await guidance from the Department of Education and state leaders. But we are working closely and continuously with the Oregon Department of Education. We are working with other districts. We're formulating some possibilities. We do not yet have clarity about what the fall opening of school may look like. We are preparing some models that will afford us some flexibility and options. As those become more clear, we'll be sharing that with students and families. I can assure everyone, we're moving as deliberately as we can, but of course, we'll be observing health authorities' guidelines to ensure safe learning environments for both our students and our staff. So in the meantime, again, I'm grateful for everyone's patience. It's been a challenging spring for all of us, and I know we would all like some semblance of certainty about the future. But it's a little bit difficult to sort of really outline those details. We hope to get guidelines about fall reopening in the coming week or two. We've seen some draft language about what that might look like regarding some rules or guidelines for schools, and we will make sure to keep the community posted. In the meantime, we miss our students. Of course, we are anxious to have you all back, and my hope is that that day comes soon. And then lastly, this evening's main entree, we're going to be taking a deep dive into where we are in our continued work at developing a multi-year strategic plan that will provide a roadmap and a blueprint towards realizing our vision. And so I'm looking forward to that discussion with the board. I think what you'll hear staff emphasize later this evening is that we're going to stay true to that North Star of the vision, our core values, the graduate portrait. We outlined the skills and dispositions that supportive adults and educators who are leaders will need to have, and we identified some important educational system shifts that will be important if we're going to transform this system to serve every one of our students. So looking forward to that conversation later in the agenda. And that's my report. Chair, ConStam, and Directors. Thank you.
It doesn't look like, I don't see Amy on the call. I wonder if she got bounced off.
I see her, but her audio isn't working.
Can you hear me?
Whoa, whoa, whoa. We can hear you a couple times.
Sounds like Psycho.
Sorry, can you hear me now? This is Rita?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Amy and I are both apparently having significant technical difficulties. So until she gets back, I guess I will take the home here. So next up is the public comment. And before we begin the public comments, I'd like to review the guidelines for public comments. First of all, before I go through this, Ms. Bradshaw, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, we have two people signed up.
Okay. All right, I'll go through this then. The board thanks the committee for taking the time to We value public input as it informs our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen. Board members and the superintendent will not respond to comments or questions during public comments, but our board office will follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. We request that complaints about individual employees be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have additional materials or items to the board or superintendent, we ask that you email them to publiccomment@pps.net. If you're watching the board meeting via the live stream while waiting, please make sure that you mute it prior to your turn to speak. Otherwise, you're going to get the feedback that I just had. If you leave it on, it will create feedback, and you'll be muted by the meeting administrator, and we'll come back to you. Please make sure that you begin your comments with clearly stating your name and spelling your last name. You'll have three minutes to speak. Three minutes, which means it's time to conclude your comment. Thank you for your call. Okay. Who is going to unmute the testifiers?
I will. Teresa McClellan. Teresa, you should now be unmuted.
Yeah, hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, okay. Hello, hello, everyone. Thank you for giving me this chance to speak. I'm a strong public school supporter and resident of the district, and three minutes is not a long time to speak, so I'm going to focus on a couple of things that are very important, I believe. One of them is priorities, and the other is accountability and transparency. So with regard to priorities, I believe strongly that our student success in the world depends strongly on a good education and the necessary technology to support that education. So I would strongly recommend and hope that Portland Public Schools continues the effort in technology and particularly supporting distance learning and other kinds of aspects of the full range of technology. The second area is accountability. And this brings me to the West Sylvan School Project, which I believe does need some transparency and accountability. This project is using about $2 million, 2017 bond measure fund. Supposedly, they're a swing fund meant for a temporary facility for displaced teams for the Lincoln High School rebuild. This project has basically fallen under the radar with public documents, documents not publicly accessible on Portland Public Schools website. Yet, we found out recently that payment structures are being built in support of building a facility for Lincoln High School baseball and softball, who never had a permanent facility. This does not seem to be appropriate use of public funds, and certainly not appropriate use of the bond fund. If new facilities for baseball and softball were going to be built, that should have been included in the bond, and we should have had an opportunity to vote on it. Given cost overruns and possible new bond measures, I think it's even more important that we have transparency, accountability, and assurance that dollars are being spent appropriately, and that they're being spent on voter-approved projects. So I'm requesting that the board actually do a more thorough review of the entire West Sylvan project, make a determination regarding its proper use of funds, and whether it should even proceed. And also in the future, as I said before, with regard to responsibilities and priorities, I think the emphasis needs to be put on technology and academic programs that support all students. Thank you.
All right, we have Anthony Castaneda. Anthony, you should be connected.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, everyone. So for the record, my name is Anthony Castaneda. My last name is spelled C-A-S-T-A-N-E-D-A. And first, I'd like to thank everyone for your time. And I'll be speaking specifically to the district's 2020-2021 proposed budget. And I submitted written testimony for this as well, so you'll get a copy of that, I believe. And I'm just going to go ahead and read it. Dear Chair ConStam and members of the board, LaTino Network is a culturally specific nonprofit serving Latino youth and families in La Nueva, Casuma, and Washington Counties. Our organization provides services to over 8,000 Latino youth families and community members in the areas of education and family stability, and supports students before, during, and after school hours through proven programs. Anticipating shortfalls in district's budget, LaTino Network urges the school board and the community to uphold their commitment to educational equity. The district must take action to mitigate COVID-19's disproportionate impact by applying investments in support of the district's most vulnerable children to community-based initiatives that give students the support often not offered directly by the district. Navigating with children as our North Star, we believe this approach will support children and families through an uneven recovery. Any proposed budget must continue to expand community partnerships, focusing on culturally specific students and families support through meaningful investments. While we find ourselves in an unfortunate situation with an uncertain future, we believe that reaffirming our values and commitment to our marginalized students and families will forward the path forward. The 2019 Portland Public School reimagined vision sheds light on this path by describing the goals for graduating class of 2030, an educational experience that will increasingly be the reality for each of our graduates from 2019 onward. The goals reflect the voice of 90 community leaders like LaTino Network, with countless decades of experience servicing and leveraging the assets and strengths of youth and families traditionally understood by school districts. The 2021 proposed budget clearly outlines the core values that must guide its approval, centering students with a racial equity and social justice lens. This cannot be more true during the pandemic we now face. In the last two months alone, LaTino Network provided emergency assistance to over 2,500 families. Similar to PPS, our agency has drastically reshuffled its curriculum to meet the immediate and basic needs for our students and families. And again, thank you for your leadership during the public health crisis and your commitment to our district's children.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you both for your comments, and please feel free to connect with our board manager, Roseanne Powell, if you have something specifically you want to follow up with the board on, or the board. Okay. Next item is an update on seniors. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce this next item?
So Directors, students, and community listening, you heard me talk a little bit about some alternative senior activities for our graduating class, but tonight we have several of our principals and some student representation to provide a little bit more detail about our seniors at this time. So I'm going to ask our high school regional superintendent, Joe LaFontaine, to introduce our esteemed guests who are going to be speaking to this topic tonight.
Good evening, Superintendent Guerrero, esteemed Directors, Chair ConStam. Back on May 5th, you heard a little bit about the K-8 challenges that we had in managing home-based distant learning. I was asked to present a little bit more information about what that looked like at the high school, and so I'd like to maybe preface some of the comments from the students and staff with a little bit more background, if I might. Next slide, please. The high schools were really challenged with this timeline. Superintendent Guerrero spoke to it in his opening about how it was almost like overnight that we had to turn around our instruction in our high schools. And this timeline shows you how the closure came on the 14th of March. And by the 17th, the high school principals had already had a meeting on how we're going to manage some things through the shutdown, and we began our discussions with the Department of Education on the 20th. By the time spring break had rolled around, high school principals were already organizing distance learning and how they were going to track students and find ways to contact students in their homes, even in the homes of the students who don't have the technology to do that. By the 30th, ODE rolled out their guidance for seniors, and by the following Friday, we already were tracking just how many students we were able to effectively contact. Would you go to the next slide, please, Roseanne? So the ODE guidance was explicit about making sure that we had some family-student contact and communication to be effective in what our instruction looked like. The Oregon Department of Education offered a lot of different ways for graduation to look differently, and they had an entire set of guidelines on what that was supposed to be. It required significant shifts in how we were tracking the success of our seniors because they actually changed the graduation expectations. And many of our seniors are on very specific programs, and what this did is it changed those programs, made some of them even unattainable, unreachable. And the state of Oregon was trying to set a single course of action for our seniors to ensure that in this epidemic, seniors would not be damaged. That was our number-one priority, is to make sure that kids weren't hurt by changing our approach and how we were delivering our instruction. So the way we operate generally is our synergy program helps us inform the student acquisition of credits toward graduation, but ODE's guidelines were different than ours. And so we had to rework our synergy system to actually inform our district on the success of our seniors moving forward. It was a very challenging time, but the IT department and the Systems Planning and Performance Department worked with us very closely to realign those systems so that we could actually get accurate informations back to schools very quickly. We also worked with the IT department on the distribution of devices, where we started with the high schools to extract the devices and distribute them across the entire district, since the majority of the devices were found in the high schools. Teacher planning at the high school looked different than that in K-8. Many teachers have six periods of instruction, and they had to find a way to reduce that in a way. 150 kids, many of them have as a caseload. How are they going to address 150 kids over the course of a week? And so the design for instruction being virtual was a challenge for everyone. You heard a little bit about some of the graduation ceremonies and events that Superintendent Guerrero showed with you, and there's a few other ones that I'd like to share. But we tried to engage students and staff and communities on what those events might look like, and the planning began as early as March, actually, on what those plans might look like. The Student-Teacher Interaction Platform as a learning tool for the system is what I'd like to talk about a little bit tonight and have some of these other people speak to, because it was different than what we thought it might look like and what our challenges were. Certainly, we made some discoveries in the process of this, and we had some real value that we've uncovered at the same time. But the paradigm shift from the way we were teaching to the way we had to teach wasn't just a challenge for our system, it was a challenge to our families. And so finding a way to be effectively able to contact them and make instruction meaningful was one of our greatest challenges. Would you move to the next slide, possibly? So we started the work in contacting families back in early April, and very quickly, each of the high schools were able to make direct contact with each of the students. You see, this chart shows you the numbers of freshmen, sophomores, and juniors that were contacted. And by May 1st, we were down to less than 5% of the students had we not been able to reach. As I speak to you today, it's less than a half a percent of the students that we've not found. We've been able to make direct contact with these families and trying to engage them. We still have some challenges in how we engage in instruction. We still have some challenges in how we engage in instruction, but we're working very diligently on that. The next slide, please. One of the things that I do want you to know is, while I can't give you an exact number on what our graduation rates will be like, I do know that our projections look as though they're at least as good as they have been in the past and probably going to be a little bit stronger. It's hard to give you an actual number on what that looks like just yet because it changes every day. Actually, we have kids earning graduation every day. The next slide, please. And Superintendent Guerrero covered several of these top items on this particular slide, but there's a few other things that we're doing for the senior class, including personal delivery of their medallions of illiteracy to their homes. And we're also posting some lawn signs to celebrate our valedictorians and senior award winners. Special class gift, we're also looking at awarding something to every senior in the class of 2020, a special gift as well. I asked to join us tonight a couple of principals. And I asked Parker Myras if he might join us. And I was thinking possibly Student Director Maxine Lateral might be able to chime in as well. But what, maybe they can share a few of their experiences that they've had this year and what it feels like for them. And what some of the things that they've seen that are wonderful little discoveries, as well as challenges we have going forward, I think that they could tell you a little bit more. Mr. Principal Frazier, would you like to maybe share something that you've seen so far this year?
Sure, thank you so much to the board. And Superintendent Guerrero, I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. As it's been stated, the distance learning model has been a challenge. However, it has really shown the resiliency of not only our district, but our students and our families and all those stakeholders involved that have been impacted by it. It's required a lot of patience, you know, from our teachers and understanding of student circumstance. Some things that came out of this that, again, benefited us that we will definitely take into next year is the opportunity to work in a more collaborative fashion as educators and working in teams and looking at how we look at standards, how we demonstrate, or how we look at student performance and ability and use that to be a better gauge of how our students are doing in the classrooms. It's required a great deal of flexibility in just being able to adapt our way of thinking and a great deal of innovation. It's been, you know, it was a rocky start at the beginning, as we know. But each week, you could just see traction and momentum being built. And part of that comes from confidence. Part of that comes from the ability to practice these platforms that teachers had to learn to become masters of very quickly. And students actually had the upper hand in the technology field, but was able to actually assist a lot of our teachers. And so to see teachers and students working in a collaborative fashion has been great. Something that I've really appreciated also is the ability for our teachers to really look at the socio-emotional aspect that comes along with learning and being able to support students in that regard. So our motto has been, you know, we know that we have to operate differently as a building. However, our values do not change. We are still focusing on maximizing relationships with students, maximizing engagement, and maximizing evidence of student ability. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Frazier. And Parker, you might all know Parker. He's one of our student leaders that frequents the board meetings and has come to know many of you directors. So I thought I'd invite Parker to share a few of his experiences from the other side of the TV screen. Parker, what have you felt so far this year?
Absolutely. It's been, you know, I'm kind of going to echo some of the things that Superintendent Guerrero has said and Principal Frazier, that it's been a challenge to adapt. And there have been unique things that have popped up that weren't anticipated. But we've also had a lot of victories. And, you know, it's a program that was, as Superintendent said, rolled out overnight with virtually, maybe a couple of weeks of being able to see it coming, but not being able to act on it. You know, and I think that the shortfalls really come from the fact that it isn't in person, which is... It's a challenge because it's a challenging platform, not due to any shortcomings of the fantastic educators, which is something I'd like to sort of shout out, if you will, my fantastic teachers and, you know, all of the other educators from around the district that have really stepped up to rewriting an entire curriculum. And that's not easy, and mistakes are made. I think that the main thing is treating it sort of as school, but not in person, which it is not. As Superintendent said, it can't replace in-person school or a face-to-face in-classroom situation. Something that I, you know, I can speak to is the... Yeah, that's the main challenge, is the sort of...
So Parker, you know, one of the things that's most profound about education is that even at my age, I have great memories of things that happened for me as a student in classes, just events that really formed who I am today and made me want to be a better learner. So that happens all the time in classroom settings. Have you had any experiences like that in this other platform at all?
I think that it's similar, but different. I think it's seeing someone who you think of as a leader, you know, a teacher is someone who should be respected. And to see them be able to adapt so well and to be able to try so genuinely... My mother's friend is a teacher in Forest Grove. And they were out in the backyard, six feet apart, of course. But she teaches elementary school. She was just going over how dearly she misses her students and how much of a struggle it is both ways.
Yeah, yeah. Maxine, how about yourself?
I can hear you, Amy, yeah.
Great. I was wondering if, how you can describe the engagement of your classmates in your live sessions with your teachers? Like, are there students that you just haven't seen? Is it pretty much the same kids who show up all the time? Can you tell us a little bit about that?
There are. As you said, there's generally a core group. In a class of 30, it might be as low as 16. In the very beginning, a lot more students showed up regularly. And I think now that the classes have, you know, we've sort of built a routine and students have adapted more, they feel that they don't need to go to the classes, and they are optional. While I do enjoy them, I'm a very social person. Any opportunity I get to talk to somebody I'm not related to, I'll take. But it's... And students typically do have their cameras off and themselves muted. But there will be the occasional question. And NearPod is a very common form of interactive distance learning. I don't know if you're familiar, it's a live sort of interface. It allows a teacher to pose a question and the students to answer in real time. And so students are interacting in the class.
Parker, this is Julia. If you had one piece of advice for the state education officials for next year, if we're going to be in a similar situation, what would it be in order to some increased engagement and the value of the interactions between teachers and staff and students?
Yeah. If I had one piece of advice, this is something that I've heard echoed between students and educators and principals, is even if it's like 10 students in a classroom at a time, if at all possible, any form of in-person interaction, any sort of classroom setting, is optimal. You know, if that's going to be feasible is yet to be determined. But I would say, I would strongly recommend some form, even if it's sort of a wonky flip-flop schedule with like shifts and whatnot.
So is that personal interaction?
Yeah, yes.
In a socially-distanced and healthy way?
Yeah, yeah. That's really how connections are made and how, at least in my experience, an educator can best connect with students.
Thanks, Parker. Does anybody have any other questions?
I just thought I might give Maxine a chance to chime in on her thoughts about this approach.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Parker. Student Director Lateral, did you have any...
Yeah, I'm here, I'm sorry. I just had my video off, so I just had to like figure out. My hair looked terrible, you know, as one does in COVID land. Yeah, so my experience during distance learning has been unique because I'm a senior, so I'm not like stressed about school anymore. I kind of checked out. But I'm still able to go to the classes that I want to go to. I really, I like going to my economics class because my teacher checks in with us and I get to see his dogs. And I have to take economics next year for college, so I'm able to like, you know, get a little bit of a head start on some of that learning, which I like. And I'm really enjoying still going to my journalism class because that community is really special to me. And I like all the people in there a lot. So being able to socialize with them, like Parker said, is definitely a really important part for me when I'm not able to like see my friends in person. Obviously sad, but being able to communicate with them on a platform and our teachers kind of creating opportunities for us to socialize. My economics teacher is going to have us do like some online board games next week for like our last class, which is really nice. And our teachers are still making sure that we get like our stoles and our cords, which is really nice. I have one of mine just hanging up before I take pictures with it because I'm definitely gonna get those pictures in anyways, even though I'm not, you know, walking across the stage. I still get to do the senior things. But I'm just really happy that I was, you know, in all this mess where, you know, what has been so many years of education leading up to this point, it's obviously sad. And like, I'm, you know, all of the seniors in the world are like, really? Like, it had to happen like now? It couldn't have waited a little bit longer? Like, we couldn't, like, summertime, it's fine. It's, we're still, there's like, there are little positives in this, like being able to see their teachers, to pick up our caps and gowns, and still getting cords and stoles and still being able to celebrate in ways that definitely weren't expected. But grateful that we have resources to make these things happen and to celebrate. I think one of my initial thoughts when this all happened was like, oh, I'm not gonna get anything now. Like, this is all just gone. Like, it's, I don't, there's nothing fun that's gonna happen. But through what teachers have done and administrators have prioritized seniors and staff, especially here, it definitely showed me, like, it's not all terrible. Like, yes, a lot of it is terrible, but there are, like, people still like love all the seniors. And that's definitely being shown, at least from my perspective.
Excellent, thank you, Maxine.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have one quick question, Mr. LaFontaine. So for our seniors who are really coming down to the wire in terms of passing a class or a few classes and getting those final credits, do we have any different, or Principal Frazier, maybe this question is for you, do we have any different structures of support available for them in virtual land? Or what are we doing to really help those kids get over the finish line?
Principal Frazier, you want to give it a Franklin spin and then I'll fill in the blanks?
Not a problem. So again, our teachers are working extremely hard to try to push and prepare those students and bring that, you know, potential incomplete up to a passing mark. And so, again, as you've heard, there's been this change where not every student is participating in either synchronous or asynchronous classes. And so it gives the teacher an opportunity to really focus on those students that need a little bit more additional support. And so they're continuing to work hard with regards to that. And so we are, you know, again, chipping away at it every single day. We're still waiting to get a little bit more information with regards to what credit recovery could look like potentially this summer. So more information will come out from that. But we have a host of teachers that are really trying to do everything that they can to help students cross the line. And so we're just waiting for more information from the district about what that could potentially look like.
So I mentioned tracking students earlier on in this conversation. It sounds a little stalker-like, but the truth is, what we were doing is we're examining very carefully what the progress was of every senior, every senior, fifth-year, sixth-year senior, every senior across the district. And Systems Planning and Performance under the Director of Dr. Brown, helped design a platform in which we could track every student, every credit, exactly where they were at and how we were achieving it and moving forward. So ODE guidance suggested that we identify students who were graduating early, as early as possible, so we could focus on the students who needed to recover credit. So we've been able to track that. I had mentioned earlier that we're graduating more students every day. That's exactly what's happening. We've actually partnered with other outside vendors to actually work with us to help support students moving forward. We're gonna have over 1,600 students gathering credits this summer. We've already had over 100 students graduate from Alliance this year. Then we had 93 last year. I mean, we are seeing some real positive movement here. And because some seniors don't have to take eight classes, then it's providing an opportunity for people to focus on what it takes for the kids to be able to successfully pass the class that they need so they can move on. And it's brought about a higher degree of focus than we've really ever seen before in regards to student credit acquisition that's required. And so the teachers and the administrators and our partners, the staff in multiple pathways, our CBOs, everybody's on the same page, working tirelessly to ensure that every senior possible gets across the stage. I just want to share one other tidbit that I find exciting. And that is that today, we just released a list of fifth- and sixth-year seniors who are not currently engaged with our schools, but were re-engaging with our schools. Because we feel that this approach has been so successful that we can reach out to them and re-engage them and get them to graduate this year as well. Because our new tracking system that came about because of this situation has now helped us identify people that are just a half a credit short of graduating. So we are doing some additional outreach even to ensure more kids have this opportunity. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to it tonight.
We're building some tools that are gonna be helpful in the long run.
Absolutely, yes.
So I have a question for Maxine and Parker. I'm curious about your thoughts about the whole concept of making things optional and what you and other students thought about that. I've heard from a lot, I've heard the opinion of a lot of parents that was really somewhat demoralizing, but I'm curious about what students felt about that.
Yeah.
Oh, am I gonna go first or are you gonna go first, Parker?
Go first.
Great, thank you so much. At least from my perspective, I think that optional right now is like a completely valid option. Didn't mean to say it twice. But I think, like, mental health of students right now is, in my perspective, one of the most important things that a student can be aware of. That didn't make any sense. But like, mental health is really important right now for students especially because there's so many stressful events going on in our lives. Like, yes, there are always stressful events going on in our lives, but I think now more than ever, there's so much uncertainty. And so adding, and usually, you know, school and schoolwork and homework is like built into that. But having a lot of uncertainty when we don't know everything that's going on, I think, is not... I don't think that schoolwork at the moment is as important as taking care... is not, I don't think that schoolwork at the moment is as important as taking care of yourself. Um, and I think that some teachers are definitely like hearing that from students and so they're trying to um, you know, be responsive and say like, yeah, that's okay. I just want to make sure that like you as a person, like you're okay and that your family is okay. You do some of the work or you come to class and you check in with me, like, that's all I want is to make sure that like you're doing okay and that you're somehow stimulating your brain. It doesn't necessarily have to be by writing an essay or learning how to do math on your own because that's really hard to do. So I think that optional work is like a really good thing right now um, for a lot of students. Yeah, that's my perspective on it.
Yeah, I I echo um, a lot of that. I I think um, you know, there still has to be some, some balance of of mandatory um, schoolwork just to to show that you are sorry, excuse me, uh, fulfilling the um, you know, the standards that have been set, but it's, it really is um, a struggle more than, more than I thought it would be. You know, I'm, I'm sitting at a nice wooden desk and a, you know, with a roof over my head and I just, I just ate and I'm struggling. So someone who is in, someone who doesn't have a house, or doesn't have a bed, can't, can't get eight hours of sleep on a nice cushy mattress, um, and then is expected to uh, then find a computer and an internet source um, and and do that work. The amount of of anxiety um, they must be experiencing uh, it must be phenomenal. Um, phenomenally large. I, but um, I I think there has to be a balance. There are a a couple of classes that are keeping up uh, the workload um, or a similar workload to what was um, previous to uh, school closures. Um, and I, those, those classes are by far the ones that I personally am struggling in the most um, and that I have heard the most the the most about from other students in terms of it being difficult. And and I think mental health right now is a huge, you know, it should be one of your top priorities. Um, because you, your whole, uh, you, you're, what you have come to expect uh, from school, from, from life, has been dramatically altered for time being. I, I really support um, having a majority of work be, be optional. I think that that's really our, our best option right now and what is best for the students.
Thanks.
Thank you, Parker.
Thank you, Parker.
Thank you.
Parker, can I say something? I just want to recognize you for um, just the maturity you just exhibited by um, recognizing your privilege and having a home and, you know, food to eat and you know, my concern is always like those kids that are most impacted, those kids that don't maybe have um, an adult in the home or don't have a place to sleep and how difficult it must be for them to get through this um, time without the support technically or or just like physically having the support. And so I just, um, I just want to thank you. I thought you exhibited some uh, great like personal uh, emotional intelligence there. And I think that's important. It's exhibiting one of the characteristics that we want to see in our graduates, so.
Thank you, Michelle.
You're here. You're here. All right, thank you. And um, please, um, Principal Frazier, convey our gratitude to your staff and everybody who's taking care of our seniors, to your colleagues and our other high schools. Thank you, Joe, for all of your work and um, that was really, that was really helpful. We'll move on to our, as the superintendent says, eventually the main entree, the budget work, but first we have a bit of policy work. Um, Director Moore, could you please introduce this um, item coming out of the Board Policy Committee, the workforce, the workplace harassment policy five point one zero point zero six zero P?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, in twenty nineteen, the Oregon Legislature made a number of revisions to statutes related to employment. The amendments were enrolled in Senate Bill four seventy-nine and Senate Bill seven twenty-six. The focus of the bills is to address unlawful conduct in the workplace and to provide protections against workplace harassment of employees. The bills require employers to provide information to employees who complain of workplace discrimination and harassment, including the district's policy supports and resources and legal remedies that may be available to them. SB seven twenty-six also provides that employers may not include nondisclosure, nondisparagement, no rehire provisions in settlement agreements for employees who have made a complaint of workplace discrimination or harassment unless agreed upon by the employee. The district already had a sexual harassment policy, five point one zero point zero six zero P, addressing sexual harassment in the workplace. Rather than create a separate workplace harassment policy, which would include sexual harassment under the statute, we incorporated the new state requirements into our existing policy. This policy was reviewed and considered by the Board Policy Committee and was provided to PAT for review. There you go. That's the
All right, thank you. The proposed policy amendments will be posted on the board website and the public comment period is twenty-one days, with the last day to comment being June sixteenth. The board will hold a second reading at our June twenty-third meeting. Thank you, Director Moore.
Director Constance?
Yes.
Uh, this is uh, Julie Ben Edwards. Um, just a question, is if we, if we assume that we're gonna stay sort of in a, in a virtual meeting environment for extended period of time, are we doing anything differently to try and get um, comments on our policies? I know we've got some pretty significant ones coming up and um, both student discipline, search and seizure, but a whole host of other ones. And it seems like we have a board meeting and we're just announcing it and posting it. It doesn't have a very far reach. I'm just, and and this isn't to be answered now, but I'm curious about what um, we can do, just given the altered work environment, the altered board meeting environment we have and the amount of engagement. Um, because it just seems like putting something out for twenty-one days and then not getting comment isn't necessarily a reflection that people don't have a point of view, but more um, maybe even not knowing that we're changing our policies.
Reda, um, head of the policy committee, do you want to speak to any changes in our practice in terms of public engagement on policy work?
Uh, I'm not aware that we've made any specifically since the COVID um, crisis started. Um, I do think that we have, we have talked about um, we have talked about including uh, other um, of our labor partners in the um, in the discussions. Um, or at least forwarding the policy, any policy revisions that are being proposed um, so that they have an opportunity to win as well.
And that's our standard practice with or without pandemic, but they do, there is a, a regular communication to them as policies are moving through.
I'm just wondering, for example, like with parents, whether we could, if we have a listserv of all the PTAs or the site councils, so that just it gets out to a broader, a broader universe. Um, because I think right now we're, it's probably a pretty limited group, so. Just as we have more substantive ones like tonight's, I think because it's based on direction to statutory change. I probably less of something that people are gonna comment on because it's just looking forward into some changes, but on other ones, if we could figure out ways to reach more parents, which seems maybe the place that we're missing people. It's been great, Maxine and Parker and all the students who have been engaged with um, around the policy developments. And then we have the mechanism to give it to at least the representative groups, but it seems like parents are a constituency in which can be helpful.
Um, adding to that comment, there are some of our policies that impact specific communities. Um, and it seems like the twenty-one day notice on the website is as good as a floor. Um, I'm wondering, because I'm being asked also how I can better engage with those policies as they're coming up, besides going to the website and and plucking them. Is there a way that I can be I can inform myself or be informed about changes that are coming well in advance, so I have a chance to communicate with the communities that I'm involved with? I mean, just for instance, anything that happens in in, you know, zone two or you know, search and seizure and 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 these policies that we know that impact disproportionately kids of color would be valuable for me to to know about or be briefed about and be able to communicate about. Um, so I'm doing my job.
Hi, uh, directors. This is Jonathan Garcia, Chief Engagement Officer here at the district. Uh, as uh, members of the board may recall, uh, pre-COVID, we were moving towards a model of engaging our community ahead of policy revisions. Uh, this is notable in our efforts around the boundary, uh, the conversations around boundary. Uh, our expectation is that before the Board of Education entertains specific uh, uh, policy revisions, that uh, that we, we could support you in your efforts to engage with our community. Uh, we have a community engagement team that is constantly uh, working and in 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 constant communication with uh, communities around uh, policy changes as reflected in uh, the various memos that we have provided to the policy committee. Uh, Director DePass, I'm happy to work with uh, our Board Manager Powell to think about how we might uh, make sure that those memos and other uh, uh, documents are available to the the broader board. Uh, and that we, I'll work with Director Roy, Director Roy, uh, our Head of Communications to make sure that we have uh, ongoing uh, places to uh, make that visible in this new COVID reality where people are spending more time online. We want to make sure that that online access is as easy for anybody to to read. So I I'm happy to to uh, to pick any of your board, uh, brains, uh, board members. Uh, I know you all have uh, expertise and you all have uh, a network of folks that you're in constant communication. If we are not, if our Office of Engagement is not in communication with the, with the communities or the stakeholders that you are involved with or that you hear from on a, on a regular basis, I would encourage you to uh, either introduce him to myself or to our Director of Community Engagement, Denise Clark. Uh, we love to build relationship with our, with our director of community and bring him into the fold to uh, help us uh, realize Vision Twenty uh, uh, PPS Reimagined, so.
Thank you, Jonathan. I, that's great. You guys, um, really, I do see you getting out in the community um, to the extent that you can. And I, I guess I'm just putting it out there that I would like to partner uh, with you on that, um, the communications, uh, just getting it out there. So we are signaling that we're all on the same team um, and that we're, that we're offering an opportunity to hear from people. If we've missed blind spots or whatever. So, so thank you so much.
Thank you. And um, we're gonna have to keep thinking about this and and ways to get the word out about our policy work. Um, Superintendent Guerrero, uh, we're looking to you next to um, bring forward your um, work around the strategic plan development, which begs perfectly into the presentation of the proposed budget. And I just want to comment on the very extensive um, budget message that you provided that grounds this whole process and grounds the specific framework for decision-making in our strategic priorities. Um, I learned a lot in that document and I'm sure it was a team effort, but really, really appreciate everything that went into that.
Uh, thank you, Chair Constance, for that. It definitely uh, represents collective work. Uh, and it it really attempts to provide a snapshot at this moment um, as to how we see our roadmap for system transformation. Um, so I'm gonna be joined this evening in this presentation, as we get it up on the screen, um, by various members of of senior leadership, uh, including our two deputy superintendents, Claire Hertz and Dr. Craig Quayar, our Executive Chief of Staff, Stephanie Soden, Dr. Russ Brown, our Chief Assistant Performance, Jonathan Garcia, our Chief Engagement Officer, who also serves as President of the Fund for PPS, and our Senior Advisor on Racial Equity and Social Justice, Danny Ledesma. Um, joining us here this evening, however, are many cabinet-level members, many senior staff uh, who are prepared to dive as deeply as we are able to and the constraints of the night allow us. Um, but uh, I will ask upfront if you will allow us, indulge us to get through about twenty slides. Uh, we will keep it to thirty or more minutes. We will, we will try to do that. I know we've uh, reserved uh, extensive time to get into a discussion, which we're very interested in hearing from our board members this evening. And before I launch into this update on our strategic plan development, which, you know, I I have heard very clearly um, uh, board directors wanting, you know, to to sort of peek under uh, where staff is with that work. Uh, I can assure you, we've been just as anxious to share um, what's emerging as far as how we get to realizing the vision that our community is excited to see be true for for our students. And we felt like tonight was an important evening to review that because um, a, an organization's resources should value and prioritize that work. Uh, and so the exercise of attaching dollars to actions uh, we think should be led by uh, emerging strategic plan priorities. So that, that's sort of our goal for tonight. Um, for those listening, uh, there's aside from this PowerPoint presentation that we're going to go through uh, sort of carousel style as staff, uh, the board also received, to Chair Constance's reference, uh, a rather extensive, yet another concise document from yours truly, uh, a thirty-page uh, narrative of some of the highlights that we're gonna review tonight. Uh, it's also important for the public to understand, there's also a posted two-volume set of our proposed uh, budget proposal. Um, and there's also some narrative upfront in volume one, uh, which you'll hear echoes of in this presentation. So uh, no shortage of reading material uh, for everyone, but we're gonna try to give you the twenty-five, thirty-minute Cliff Notes version here this evening. So tonight's outline, um, we're gonna take you on a little bit of a journey with us as we reflect about um, the context of the history that brings us to this time uh, and the possibilities moving forward in into the future, into the future. So um, I've shared with you the artifacts that that we have available, uh, the captures, some of what we're sharing here tonight. Um, but we want to make sure that students, families, staff and the public um, have, have a window into uh, our emerging thinking uh, about uh, our roadmap moving forward. So we're gonna share our reflections, a little bit of our reflections on leadership, uh, history, current context. Some of this will be familiar uh, to those of you who have grown up here in the Portland area. Uh, it's been part of our journey and learning. Uh, who didn't? Uh, we'll revisit our North Star because that's our guidepost, our community-led vision, PPS Reimagined. Uh, we'll, we'll describe how our North Star connects us to our overarching commitment to racial equity, social justice, how our approach is a targeted universalism identified one. And it's gonna lead us to the development of our bold theory of action. Uh, we'll discuss how our strategies, how our investments, uh, we believe will help us achieve the student performance goals, which the board has identified and which we'll continue to expand on uh, over time. So hopefully you start to see the jigsaw puzzles, pieces uh, come together uh, as we get into this conversation. So uh, I'm also happy to present um, this evening, sort of our emerging year one strategies of what will be an integrated part of a multi-year strategic plan, a much more comprehensive one. Now, this first phase is centered around Now, this first phase is centered around five prioritized system shifts. You'll recognize them from the vision. We prioritized five of them for the coming year that we felt were foundational, that spoke to the organizational shifts that need to take place. They described how the Central Office and its role works in partnership with our school communities to accelerate the work and outcomes for our students. After we described those sets of system shifts and related strategies, we'll be presenting our proposed investment plan that despite some sobering recent resource constraints, we're maintaining alignment to these focused priorities, vision, and values. So hopefully, at the end of this presentation, you have a clear sense of the path forward as we imagine it, that we think will get us to becoming a premier school district. So, moving on, Slide Three. We're here tonight because collectively, we believe in this power of a high-quality, free public education, right? This belief requires us to be reflective, to be adaptive leaders. And for PPS, this means we have to empower everyone in the organization to build their technical expertise, their craft, their art, their content knowledge. And we insist on this culture where we have to be adaptive, that we have to be able to reflect on not just our lived experiences, but demonstrate and also cultivate resiliency, which I think we're seeing examples of even just from our students and school leaders tonight describe. We have to be able to, our Director commented earlier about an ability to convene diverse groups of stakeholders to address some of these, in some cases, thorny issues. We have to inspire everyone to join what should be a collective movement. The last three months have crystallized for us as a team that the current circumstances and the future might be uncertain. And some of the technical skills might have served us to that point well, but we're going to have to continue to rise up to the challenges that are before us. So how do we stay true to moving towards the North Star and not let the current delivery model or constraints of, but rather see opportunities in how we leapfrog into that kind of a future? So as a system, we're going to stay focused on leadership, we believe are going to be important by everyone in the organization and that collective ability to embark on positive change. So to dive a little bit into some of the chronology and the context upon which we're building, Danny Ledesma.
Thank you. Good evening. So when, a lot of times when we speak about our commitment to racial equity and social justice, we get nods of agreement. Folks are very sort of like, this is the right thing to do. But those nods tend to slow down when we start talking about strategies that directly address racism or they specify targeted solutions for specific student groups. And I think, and I think we think at PPS, is that a lot of this is because as Americans, as Portlanders, we're really conditioned to believe that racism is this thing, it's a limited incident. It's something that's personal that you can prove. And at PPS, we know that in order to be able to address these pernicious opportunity gaps, we have to be really explicit about the role of race. And we also know that we have to be aware of our history so that we can be intentional not to embed oppression into our culture and into our classrooms. So I'd like to start tonight by acknowledging, while that even though we're gathering virtually, our schools and our homes and community gathering spaces rest on the lands of the traditional, rest on the traditional lands of the bands of the Chinook, Multnomah, Clackamas, Tuolitan, Mulala, Kalapuya, Wasco, Kowalts, and Kalamet tribes. These tribes established their communities in a resource-rich area where they traded and fished along the rivers and harvested those natural resources that fed and maintain our families. Until European contact, federal policy was to eliminate tribal people and much later to assimilate us in an attempt to erase our rich tribal traditions. In the 1950s, under federal relocation policy, a large segment of the Native population in the US was forced to relocate to several major cities, of which Portland was one. And this is why in Portland, we see so much tribal diversity here. During the same era, under the Oregon Termination Act and the Klamath Termination Act, many of our Oregon tribes and governments were abolished and tribal lands were taken away. And some of these governments were partially reinstated over 20 years later, but there are many still who are not reinstated. And the federal boarding school era policies that went well into the 1960s attempted assimilation through the removal of children from their families in order to kill the Indian and save the man. None of these policies could be challenged through the electoral process because Oregon restricted Native Americans from voting until the passage of the Voting Rights Act in 1965. In the mid-1850s, treaties submitted to Congress by Oregon and Washington, Indian Commissioners Joel Palmer and Isaac Stevens promised to provide teachers and schools to tribes. The 1855 treaty with the Willamette Valley Indians obligated the federal government to establish manual labor schools among the Mulala, Umquah, and Kalapuya, which included the construction of buildings and the provision of substances, of substance, of sustenance for students. As transportation systems improved and public education became more accessible in the early 20th century, many of the reservation schools were closed and Indian students were sent to Chumawa or to public schools. To date, the Native American community in Multnomah County exists as a testament to resilience and resistance. We know that Portland's metro Native community is diverse and growing and that our population is estimated to be nearly 70,000. We've selected three dates to talk about and to illuminate the Black student experience at Portland Public Schools. The first date I'd like to talk about is 1867, where the official segregation of Black students occurred in PPS. So our very unfortunate history goes back to the 19th century. William Brown, a resident of Portland in the 1860s, tried to enroll his children into one of Portland's only two public elementary schools, launching what would be the first and only case of official segregation of Black children in Portland Public Schools. After repeated attempts to enroll his children, which was, you know, in our schools, which were established prior to 1851, and being denied, Mr. Brown appealed to the Board of Education. And again, his children were denied access. Eventually, rather than risking the anger of PPS white parents, the school board at the time eventually allocated $800 for a segregated school in southwest Portland on the corner of Southwest Fourth and Columbia Street, which, I don't know if you guys know, that's very close to City Hall. Every year, at school board meetings, this school's existence was called into question until it was abolished in 1872, and 30 Black students were, quote, "welcomes" into an integrated PPS. The second date I want to talk about is 1954, the Brown versus Board of Education. So as we know, racist policies and practices continued in our state well into the 20th century. The PPS Board of Education took the position at this time that PPS had a policy of equal education and that would take no action regarding segregation in Portland Public Schools, following the landmark Supreme Court ruling of Brown versus Board of Education in 1954. This colorblind and unconstitutional view persisted unchallenged until 1962, when the local chapter of the NAACP accused PPS of being segregated and unequal for Black children. 1982, three decades later, to address the failure of the Board of Education to take action regarding the needs of PPS's Black students, the Black United Front, led by Ronnie Herndon, along with others, protested the school board's decision to locate Harriet Tubman Middle School at Boise Elementary School, eliminating the only elementary school within the Black community. We'll go to the next slide.
So our history of serving, of not serving, excuse me, Black and Native American students and many other students of color does not reflect the type of community we aspire to be. And while that brief history we just covered is meant to provide illuminating examples, it's not meant to be a comprehensive history. We do believe, however, that PPS finally has the momentum to make the massive changes needed to alter our future for the better. In 2011, as many of you know, the Board of Education adopted a racial educational equity policy that called out harmful disparities in our schools and identified the district's role in eliminating them. And as you know, our Board of Education selected Guadalupe Guerrero as superintendent, making him the first Latino superintendent in our history, joining a public school system with hope for the future and a strong sense of collective potential to address historical inequities in the district. Adopting a sense of urgency, Superintendent Guerrero prioritized assembling a senior leadership team that immediately began to collaboratively develop and establish the foundation for the work ahead. And in that first year, the superintendent and leadership team began the important work of planning and implementing the essential building blocks of district improvement, including an outlined core curriculum and related professional learning opportunities for educators and leaders, training opportunities in differentiated academic and behavioral supports, and the instituting of a balanced assessment system to inform school improvement efforts. Since the superintendent's arrival, almost every single department in the Central Office has solidified its core functions this school year and identified key focus areas to improve on towards greater system coherence and effectiveness. A much improved organizational culture, more squarely focused on a commitment to transformation, has taken root, and optimism about our potential and future has begun to permeate a more public, positive public narrative. Recognizing the importance of school engagement, the superintendent has maintained an active and visible presence in our school communities, visiting hundreds of classrooms and attending an array of school events to both demonstrate support for our schools and to have an opportunity to interact with and hear directly from students, school-based staff, and families. We have moved quickly and with determination while also modeling the characteristics of a learning organization.
Hi, everyone. Again, this is Jonathan Garcia, Chief Engagement Officer. So if you recall, last August, in front of hundreds of school administrators, central office leaders, and community and civic leaders, Director Scott Bailey danced away. No, Superintendent Guerrero kicked off the year at our Second Annual Weeklong Leadership Institute. That is a picture there of that fun Friday morning. If you remember, we launched this year really with a deep sense of urgency to accelerate student achievement and with deep optimism that a brighter future was indeed possible in public education throughout Oregon. A few weeks earlier, and that morning, Governor Kate Brown joined us after she had signed the Historic Student Success Act, which provided $1 billion to support targeted public education investments across the state. In our third year, under the superintendent's leadership, under Superintendent Guerrero's leadership, PPS continues our steadfast commitment to accelerating student achievement. And as you heard in today's context, especially for Portland's Black and Native American children. As you all know, with a community-informed vision, we have focused this year on developing a multi-year strategic plan that guides our decisions at the system level and investments to realize the vision for our graduates in the larger learning ecosystem. We've spent this year really promoting a culture of continuous improvement and professional learning for our educators and for our leaders. And lastly, we've been really focused on leading with a deep commitment to racial equity and a bold commitment to social justice, really centering the students most in need of our resources and our strategic decisions. Since the Board of Education so awesomely and unanimously adopted PPS Reimagined as the district's North Star back in, was it June, July, or August of 2019? Across the system, we have begun to integrate the tenants of the vision into our plannings and our programming. And I want to give you a couple of examples of how that's already manifested itself. In the Office of College and Career Readiness, led by our Senior Director, Dr. Aurora Terry, she's convened all of our district high school principals and our community-based CTE partners to begin aligning the district's four-year high school success plan to our vision by mapping out the graduate profile with high school learning. On the other side of the spectrum, our PPS Early Education Team met literally the day after the school board approved the vision to create an age-appropriate way to describe the characteristics of our graduate profile to the, from the perspective of our earliest learners. And as you all know, one of the things that our superintendent is really focused on for the school system is to redesign the middle school experience for our young people. So the middle school redesign team has been beginning to utilize the graduate profile to prioritize the key areas that we need to emphasize to have an ideal middle grades experience for all of our students, knowing that these middle grades are some of the most formative years in our students' identity and development. Across our community, staff and partners, sorry, across our community, staff and partners, inspired by our bold future aspiration for students and their educational experience described in our vision, we swiftly moved to align our work of our Student Success Act. So when we, when our governor announced the $1 billion Student Success Act, as you all remember, we launched a district-wide, a city-wide engagement process. We carried that spirit of innovation, of engagement, of collaboration that we cultivated in our visioning process into the planning of our Student Success Act investment account. And so to keep with our focus of accelerating growth for students of color, for our Black and Native American students, staff collaborated with the community and several organizations to engage with students, families, staff, community partners, to elicit feedback and input into the planning and application process. We heard from and partnered with the Coalition of Communities of Color, Stanford Children, and even our Portland Association of Teachers, who, within partnership, we released a district-wide survey to gather feedback about the needs and how we might use the resources, the financial resources, to move the vision forward. As you all know, more than two months ago, we were thrown into this unprecedented reality of the global pandemic. Our schools have been closed, but our commitment to educating our students remains the same. What we know is that this pandemic has illustrated troubling inequities and we need to shift our system so that our community can be fully supported. Especially, as we know, that COVID is impacting communities of color at an accelerated rate. How do we create a system that supports them, supports us, supports our community during this time? So we're committed to acknowledging the different impact that the crisis is having on our schools and community and are providing culturally specific, targeted responses to this pandemic.
Good evening. Claire Hertz, Deputy Superintendent, speaking. I'm happy to join this team in presenting tonight. We want to talk about a key shift in embracing continuous, can you go back one slide? Thank you. A key shift in embracing continuous improvement, our relentless pursuit of racial equity and social justice. Our work in racial equity and social justice to date has included several key milestones in our PPS RESJ framework and plan and updated it to include equitable business operations goals to incorporate the district's work in finance, planning and construction, and sustainability. And these goals were developed in collaboration with all of the business operation leaders. We instituted a cross-functional RESJ Advisory Committee to create and promote educational, social, and professional programs, develop goals and activities to increase understanding and progress. We do this work because we believe in the fundamental right to human dignity and that generating an equitable world requires an educational system that intentionally disrupts and builds leaders to disrupt systems of oppression. We want to be explicit about how the work is done and our use of the targeted universalism approach. We recognize resource conversations can be polarizing and discourse can become trapped in either-or zero-sum mindsets. Our targeted universalism approach aims to operationalize our RESJ values so every student is served, so our universal board goals and the graduate profile of our vision are achieved. Our targeted universalism approach supports the district's needs of students of Our targeted universalism approach supports the district's needs of students of color while also acknowledging our mutual interdependence. Targeted universalism means setting universal goals pursued by targeted processes to achieve those goals. With a targeted universalism framework, universal goals are established for every group, every student. The strategies developed to achieve those goals are targeted based upon how different groups are situated within structures, culture, and across geographies to obtain the universal goal. Targeted universalism is goal-oriented and the processes are directed in service of the explicit universal goal. And now I'll turn it back to Dani LaDesma.
Thanks, Claire. So we recognize with a great sense of urgency the need for aligned and coherent strategies that improve conditions so that students of color have an educational experience where they can thrive. And our approach is disruptive. We attempt to disrupt institutional and cultural racism and to promote tangible strategies and resources for racial equity and social justice. Students of color are centered in our strategies and these strategies promote improvement for the entire system. We also know that our explicit and targeted approach may elicit fear and a feeling of being left out. Candidly, when we see this type of discourse everywhere in Portland, people want what they want until it's not comfortable. And then we want to revert back to the traditional ways of doing things that underserves and oppresses our students of color. It goes back to that head nodding. We're with you until something has to change and something makes us uncomfortable. But we believe that if we stay in agreement, that as a collective, we are going to be willing, we are going to be able to be willing to do things differently, to be able to reimagine PPS and experience the discomfort as a collective. And if we do that, we are better positioned for success. We are, like Claire said, challenging this zero-sum ideology and either-or mindset because we know that when we center an entire system on the experiences of Black students who've been told that they are a burden and Native students who have been erased, that every student recognizes that this is a system that is better prepared to meet their needs because we see them. So we're pretty emboldened about this approach because we heard it and we heard about the need for this approach throughout our visioning process. As Jonathan alluded to and described, we started the visioning process in the fall of 2018 where thousands of students, our educators, and our community gave their time, and that was lots of time, lots of valuable Saturday time, to share their experiences, express their hopes, and contribute their ideas in scores of meetings, big and small. The vision describes our goals for the graduating class of 2030 and the educational experience that will increasingly be the reality for each of our graduates from 2019 onward. The work included an exploration of future trends that are likely to impact education in Portland, learning journeys to schools and organizations already engaged in ideas that PPS might be interested in adopting, and design exercises that considered the needs of students, educators, families, and community members. The process engaged thousands of stakeholders, including students, families, educators, district staffs, and civic, business, community, and philanthropic leaders, and produced nearly 16,000 data points that became the basis for the various elements of our vision. We adopted our community-informed vision, PPS Reimagined, in May 2019, and PPS is committed to preparing our students to lead change and improve the world for the district we aim to be. We define for our, in the vision, we define for our community, our community defined our vision, our core values, a graduate portrait, educator essentials, and system shifts. So in order to advance the vision and achieve the board goals, the three-year board goals that were developed by you, we examined our current state to develop a theory of action for change to identify key priorities. And we utilize this theory of action to provide focus and to center our decision-making on the experiences of students of color. Our theory of action explicitly calls out the pernicious institutional and cultural racism embedded in our system and prompts us to take action that disrupts the barriers that hinder us from reaching our goals. Our theory of action is a clear expression of targeted universalism. We know that it also has the potential to set off feelings for folks who may not be as used to this definition or this practice. But we're still very, we're still very committed and emboldened by our theory.
So our attempt here is to make explicit the connections between the call to action that permeates our leadership moves every day to address those past and current inadequacies in supporting Black and Native students. And they form the bedrock of our approach moving forward for moving our district forward. So we have to start by recognizing that this system was built and operated on a foundation of inequities. And we have to apply the best strategies forward that are actually going to break down and eliminate those structural and systemic barriers if we're going to achieve collective success. So if we want to transcend what divides us, then we need to do that directly and explicitly by calling out instances of racism. So it's with those things in mind that we developed and now present to you an emerging strategic plan and aligned and resulting investment plan to date and how it's anchored to the aspirations that we have for every student in the Portland Public Schools. And we've not shied away from, a strategic plan will always have indicators as to whether we're being successful. Oftentimes, it's unclear in systems what success actually means. We actually started by defining that aspirational vision for our students as what we want. And we also identified some key indicators that we were satisfying our educational core mission. And so we set as barometers with, or the Board established performance goals for our students. It's a first set of indicators that I believe will evolve into a more comprehensive balanced scorecard. But to speak to our student performance goals and how they fit into this emerging strategic plan is our Chief Assistant Performance, Dr. Russell Brown.
Yes, a key component to our journey towards transformation is the way that we hold ourselves mutually accountable to our values and commitment. To put it shortly, we have to hold ourselves accountable to the metrics and how we move the system forward over time. As our theory of action suggests, our school system is making a significant declaration, that is, community will disrupt racism in our system and improve conditions so that Black and Native American students can reach their potential. Part of that commitment was led by the Board with the establishment of four board goals with metrics. And those metrics, which were identified in October of 2019 and then later reported in a major progress, act as an anchor for the plan and for our school, district leaders and school principals to monitor progress toward the outcomes of this plan. Within, you know, any of this work obviously requires data systems and requires integration of data systems over time to be able to support this so that people have real-time information to support movement over time. And in that work this year, we have worked with, through the Office of System Performance to refine our assessment system, to have a more balanced assessment system with parsimony that protects instructional time and while still supporting and providing the core data that we need to be able to measure changes and achievement over time. So in this emerging plan, our community has defined our destination through the PPS Reimagined, the vision. The Board has outlined community's accountability metrics and the district's leadership is committed to upholding this bold theory of action that embraces targeted universalism. And as school leaders, we are responsible for holding progress on the system shifts. We want to ensure that we have clear priorities to advance toward the vision, guide decision-making, and remain responsive to our student-family-changing needs. This is the first in a sequence of multi-year strategic plans informed by continuous improvement that will serve as the district's roadmap. In a time of crisis, even more important that we double down on our efforts and ensure all our students, in particular our Black and Native students, and our schools with the greatest need, those CSI and TSI, that is, comprehensive support and targeted support schools, will reach success. And with that, I'm going to transition to Ms. Soden, who will begin to talk about some of the system shifts.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. So a diverse work group of district leaders prioritized five specific educational system shifts and identified specific strategies to prioritize in year one of strategic plan implementation, which is the 2021 school year. We will advance these shifts while maintaining operational health and safety activities necessary to run and support students and schools. Because the near-term pandemic-affected future is still uncertain, we are also adopting flexible annual action plans that can be adjusted as needs evolve. To identify prioritized work for year two, we utilize the following principles to guide our decision-making: maintain a collective focus on our theory of action of accelerating outcomes for Black and Native students; continuously improve and support the conditions and capacity in our high-need school communities, CSI and TSI schools Dr. Brown just mentioned; hold true to our community-developed Vision Reimagined PPS; remain committed to our emerging strategic plan and prioritize system shifts, even if they have to become a narrower scope of action steps that cascade and are sequenced over time; and finally, to continue to ensure the health and safety of students, adhere to our legal responsibilities, and fulfill basic operational needs and costs. What we will prioritize and what we hope to accomplish in the 2021 school year is progress in the following five educational system shifts: A, a connected and transformative school district; B, racial equity-aligned systems and structures; C, cultivating system-wide learning in a diverse workforce; E, transformative curriculum and pedagogy; and E, a culture of physical and emotional safety. Okay, you did slide. So system shift A, a connected and transformative school district. We identified one strategy is about cultural evolution that we want to make as a system and the way we work together. We will be deliberate in how we collaborate towards our goals, build our muscle and capacity for adaptive change, and collaborate cross-departmentally. We worked on strengthening core functions and the next step is to collaborate and more deeply and regularly include community voice in achieving our goals. This is particularly important as we begin strategic plan implementation because stronger collaboration and community will help us bring all of our strategies to life. So to achieve the 2021 action steps, first, we develop, vet, and implement our community engagement framework to help us ensure that decisions and efforts include community voice, especially of our Black and Native students and families. We will build the capacity of senior leaders in our district to engage in a continuous feedback loop with students, families, and community partners by using the framework and practice. We will create collaborative teams across central office departments to lead and implement the work of our strategic plan, strengthen cross-functional collaboration, and increase our effectiveness and our efficiency. Shifting our culture with our leaders and we will shift our culture, I'm sorry. Shifting our culture starts with our leaders and we will scaffold this throughout our system by continuing to establish and evolve organizational leadership structures, including clearly identified roles and functions, especially as they pertain to our vision and our strategic plan. We will accelerate the adoption of the vision across the district, students, families, and community partners by communicating and building an understanding of and investment in our vision and strategic plan. And I'll let Dr. Brown talk about our second strategy.
Thank you. Our second strategy in terms of educational system shifts focuses on managing our performance as a district, including our quality of service and support to our students, families, and schools. Through performance management, we will provide a more intentionally aligned system and continue to build a strong district culture of continuous improvement that keeps all students, especially those students experiencing the most barriers, at the center of everything that we do. Focus, alignment, and continuous improvement will support our progress towards strategic priorities and our vision, which is even more important during the current circumstances as we adapt to new needs and challenges and as we embrace change. To achieve these goals will require some action steps in the 2021 year, including establishing a central office performance management framework to help us measure our progress towards our goals and our plan and our goals and to define those multifunction teams. We will also work to train the central office on identifying and implementing a culture of service to our schools and the students that they serve. We will establish a system for gathering customer service feedback for the central office's services provided to schools to understand how we can continue to improve our support to schools over time. We'll also design a school improvement process aligned to our board goals and strategic plan and explore options for integrated tools to support school-level database decision-making. Ultimately, we're aiming for continuous improvement activities that inform improvements in instruction for our schools and in support of service and in the services that provide support to our schools in that instruction. Finally, we will develop an annual report akin to what we did with the board goals where we had a major report. In this case, we'll have an annual report to communicate our progress on the plan and a unified organizational dashboard that will allow the community to understand our progress on the plan over time for the key initiatives, board goals, and identified strategic plan priorities. And moving on to system shift B, Dani.
Thanks, Russ. So our second system shift is system shift B, which is racial equity-aligned system, structures, and culture. And there are two strategies. Our first strategy is about disrupting institutional racism by building on individual racial equity and social justice efforts to develop a shared system-wide mindset and practice of improving as a community in alignment with our community, with our theory of action. So our current context has underscored the inequities in the system and reinforces the need to keep racial equity and social justice front and center in all of our decision-making, including resource allocations. This strategy is about disrupting institutional racism by building on our individual efforts to develop a shared system-wide mindset and practice of improving as a community in alignment with our theory of action. So to achieve this goal, we're going to have some action steps. So first, we'll communicate and build an understanding of our racial equity and social justice lens and hold our leaders accountable to use the racial equity and social justice lens at the outset of decision-making. This will require developing protocols with the superintendent's leadership team for identifying and using RESJ considerations in decision-making and providing professional development. To increase awareness of and transparency around our decision-making and leverage the expertise of our community to move together as a community, we will set up and convene a racial equity, social justice, community accountability committee. The CAC will support development of our racial equity, social justice-related work across the district by providing input and feedback and will help us cultivate a growing set of influencers across the system that will help us continue to disrupt institutional racism and become a more equitable district. We'll continue to support and convene our cross-functional RESJ Advisory Committee who, to be able to shepherd our centralized racial equity, social justice plan and ensure that there is cohesion across the system. Our second strategy is about developing the core competencies and learning standards that we want all PPS staff members to lean into to increase the capacity of our district. If we build individual readiness to understand, learn about, and support racial equity and social justice practices, we can strengthen our organizational culture and capacity to proactively counteract inequities and champion culturally responsive practices. So by building our capacity, we can become a system that embodies racial equity and social justice practices to support all students, especially our Black and Native students that experience the greatest barriers to achieving a graduate profile. So to achieve the action steps that are listed, we will provide staff development and support focused on the competencies and skills that are set out in our racial equity, social justice, professional development framework, and the educator essentials through two approaches. One, we'll continue our partnership with the Center for Equity and Inclusion to provide racial equity to provide racial equity and social justice professional development to leaders and influencers first. And two, pilot cohorts of staff to engage in continued learning. First, we'll get clear on key influencers who can take on this work first, apply learnings, and encourage colleagues to support our goals for racial equity and social justice. This will result in 300 new staff receiving training in our first year, totaling about 1,600 employees over three years who are trained in this professional development as influencers. Additionally, we'll pilot new cohorts, leverage district-wide professional development opportunities, and prioritize student support services and teaching and learning staff, including our multi-tier systems of support, our teachers' on special assignments, and our social emotional and learning, social emotional learning staff to encourage cross-departmental coherence and alignment. And to support this work, we'll develop a rubric for our framework, our professional development framework competencies, and develop a scope and sequence for our racial equity, social justice, professional development. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Quayar.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Craig Quayar, Deputy Superintendent. We're now going to go over and discuss a little bit about system shift C, which is the cultivating a system-wide learning in a diverse workforce. There is one strategy for this shift, and this strategy is focused on ensuring staff get the support and the development that they need in light of current events and alignment with competencies and skills that's set out in the RESJ PD framework and the educator essentials that will help us better support students and create conditions where all students, where all educators thrive. Through this work, we can begin to improve on our professional development opportunities, apply our racial equity and social justice lens, and draw connections to the educator essentials so that all students, especially our Black and Native students that experience the greatest barriers, achieve the graduate profile. To achieve the 2021 action steps, we will continue to review, reflect on, and evaluate professional development opportunities to learn what we have in place, how it meets the needs of teachers and leaders in our system, and how it aligns with the educator essentials, strategic plan, and the emerging needs of our staff. We'll apply a cycle of continuous inquiry and improvement to reflect on and learn from feedback and quality developmental opportunities. We'll continue to provide and continuously improve and align leader, teacher, and system-wide professional development and training opportunities that help us grow towards our vision and goals. We will continue collaboration with the ODE, MESD, and our college and university partnerships such as PSU, U of O, and Warner Pacific to support the PPS career pathways framework, build lattices of support, and ensure the development of a diverse licensed and high-quality workforce. We will pilot social, emotional well-being learning for adults to create working conditions where employees thrive, especially our employees of color, aligned with racial equity and social justice work and with RISE and CASL efforts. To guide our ongoing efforts, we will create a cross-functional committee that we will be charged with aligning professional development needs and building system-wide capacity to fulfill our educator essentials. This shift enhances the district's ability for the creation of a transformative curriculum and pedagogy, which now shifts into system shift D. Next slide, thank you. A transformative curriculum and pedagogy is centered around two strategies. The strategy is about the implementation of a guaranteed and viable core curriculum and resources aligned to standards to ensure all students meet our graduate profile. We believe we have an opportunity to be transformative and innovative in how instruction looks, and that by providing this foundational core, we will be able to ensure students are prepared and are agents in their own learning. And we are prepared to meet the dynamic and changing reality of instruction as we continue to develop and enhance teacher practice. To achieve the 2021 action steps, we have already begun the process of selecting resources to adopt of a math program and a foundational literacy program. We will invest in these necessary resources, provide supporting professional development and the rollout of our curriculum. As we work to become a digital district, we will continue our work to develop a digital backpack, including the applications and platforms as online resources in the teaching and learning process inside of the core curriculum, the DVC Development and Implementation. We will continue to support the learning of all students in all of our content areas and grade levels as we further develop our core curriculum in math and foundational literacy. The pre-K3 alignment will continue to be developed through collaboration with our early learning partners, community-based organizations, and district staff. And with that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Guedetto, who will go into strategy two.
So as you're picking up, directors, the focus here is on those organizational-level system shifts and what it takes to posture a central office and all levels towards that student-at-the-center experience. And this one in particular begins to speak to impacting on what the student actual experience is. So Dr. Quayar just talked about in strategy one, that foundational core curricular work, that early education alignment. There's... E, attributes that our vision goes into quite depth about describing the range of learning experiences that also integrates content, we think will empower students with their sense of agency and prepare them for those post-secondary college career lifelong learning experiences. So how can we engage students in those kinds of developmentally appropriate opportunities that are more personalized, that develop their problem-solving skills? How can we afford students opportunities to explore and cultivate their unique gifts, abilities, talents in a broad range of enriched core as well as electives and extracurriculars that so often are what engage our students in their school experience? And so we've identified a couple of areas where we'll be continuing to place an emphasis, where we're going to go even deeper into this whole education aspect. We're going to look at this through an improvement science and design thinking approach that involves our students in defining the experience and our educators as well in sort of how do they prepare themselves for those kinds of experiences? So the well-rounded education will drive forward our work in visual and performing arts that is emerging in the master arts education plan. It'll continue to expand and close career technical education gaps. It'll continue to think about how to incorporate an inquiry-based, project-based approach. It'll bring alignment to PK three, early education continuums. It'll ensure that there's fidelity to ethnic studies, Indian education curriculum across our schools. It'll make sure that climate justice and the other areas are available and promoted in all of our schools. Those are just a sample set of the kinds of well-rounded education that we intend to drive forward in the coming school year. So that's the second strategy. You see some of those items listed in the system shift integrated there. And then we have system shift E, and Claire's going to talk about the culture of physical and emotional safety and our strategies there.
So this is our fifth and final priority for our system shifts that come from our vision, from our community, and our implementation for this next year. And so the strategy is about how we reinforce academic and behavior systems and structures in support of a guaranteed and viable curriculum. It's also how we best meet the health, social, emotional wellness, and safety needs of our students and community. This involves using data and RESJ practices to create support systems and address disparities in the development of those systems that meet student needs. So in 2021, our action steps will include continuing to implement a comprehensive system of targeted supports and interventions that address academic behavior and social emotional needs by moving forward Cohort Two for MTSS training for an additional 40 schools, while continuing to support the first cohort of schools through coaching, support, and professional learning communities. A cross-functional team will map out a five-year implementation plan for social, emotional learning. We will continue ongoing capacity building and continuous improvement of school climate and school improvement planning. We will continue the Student Success Survey and partner with Panorama to ensure we gather climate survey data, monitor progress, and adjust based on data. We will integrate RESJ strategies executed by culturally-specific partners, families, and school-based teams to include positive cultural identity development, engagement, and wraparound services to support students and families. Additionally, we'll monitor how needs change, given our current circumstances, to support students, families, and staff as we reopen schools and continue teaching and learning next year, including providing mental health and wellness options. And on that, I'll turn it back to Stephanie Soden.
So the shifts and corresponding next steps described in these previous slides represent the organizational-level work we need to accomplish in order to support a transformed experience and outcomes for our students. Our next phase of work will focus on the engagement and input of our educators and students to identify and prioritize strategic action steps that will advance our educator essentials and graduate portrait.
So you've heard in prior slides ways that we've discussed tangible action steps and ways that we want to improve our collective work. And we know that to maximize our effectiveness, we need to ensure that our approach to resource allocation is consistent with our priorities. And as we continue to face uncertainty in the coming year, we know that we can adapt with clarity by prioritizing and aligning our resources to what matters. And one way to develop our collective ability to drive resources to our priorities in alignment with our theory of action is to apply our racial equity, social justice lens. So using our racial equity and social justice lens, we consistently ask and reflect on the question of who is burdened and who benefits. We can better inform our decision-making by grappling with the implications of our decisions and intentionally asking ourselves about the assumptions we make, how students and their families impacted by decision-making are intentionally engaged to be part of co-creating solutions. We are data-informed and question our data sources, our data use, and we also think about how we're going to track data in the future so that we can monitor our improvement. The use of this decision support tool helps us cultivate a growth mindset where we reflect and adapt in service to our students of color, which in turn can strengthen our system for every student. We hope that you see both our values and priority framework along with evidence of application of our RESJ lens reflected in our investment plan that Dr. Quayar is going to present to you.
Our investment plan allocates resources in three categories: professional development and a culture of learning, student success, and safety and modernization. Our investments in professional development and a culture of learning will continue to reflect the importance of the people who are the foundation of this district. In service to our students, we are proposing key investments to increase, support, and develop staff in alignment with our plan. We believe in the power and the potential of our human capital and endeavor to stoke the creative fires we need in our classrooms, our school campuses, the central office, and in our community. We believe these investments will accelerate the shifts to a connected and transformative school district through system-wide learning and a racial equity-aligned culture system. Some of these professional learning investments will include: the expansion of training for school sites and systemic targeted interventions and supports for students; expanded learning opportunities in racial equity and social justice aligned to the RESJ PD framework; and increased leadership development and support in improvement science and continuous learning; diversity and support talent through recruitment, retention, and employee social emotional learning; supporting time for participation in cross-functional teams; and enhanced communications to ensure transparency. Our belief in the ability and promise of every student calls us to invest in tangible, high-leverage strategies that positively impact student success. The investment plan for the next school year will be dedicated to continuing to implement key student-focused and student-led initiatives in several areas that will accelerate the shifts to transform our curriculum and pedagogy, build a culture of physical and emotional safety, and a racial equity-aligned and integrated system. Some of these student success investments include: academic curriculum, instruction, and enrichment; an increase in access to technology devices, content, and connectivity; increase in arts education staffing and materials; providing additional curriculum materials, new ESL and ELD curriculum; DVC for health and physical education; providing more opportunities for career pathways and career and technical education; academic supports and targeted interventions for students that need it the most, such as additional teachers and instructional specialists at targeted schools; expanding access to early education through plans and staffing; increase of classroom services for special education; social, emotional, and mental health supports with a focus on increasing counselors, social workers, and school psychologists; additional school climate and restorative practice specialists; culturally-specific student and family supports with a focus on the expansion of the RESJ partnerships to implement culturally-specific family engagement, wraparound services, mentoring and leadership development, enrichment, and extended learning; positive cultural identity development, and culturally-specific crisis response; increased support for students of color to participate in leadership opportunities such as student government, clubs, and affinity spaces, site council across middle school and high school campuses; and an expansion of staffing that continue to support our community engagement.
In our third investment area, safety and modernization, include many large capital improvement projects. These reflect the ways our students and community shared innovative ways to define physical and emotional safety and the resulting learning environments conducive to student success. We believe these investments will build a culture of physical and emotional safety, accelerate the shifts to transform our curriculum and pedagogy, and a connected and transformative school district responsive to the full range of students' physical and safety needs. So projects continuing in 2021 include Kellogg and Madison High School. Construction will be completed in late summer '21, opening for students in fall '21. Exciting times for those communities. Benson Polytechnic High School and the Multiple Pathways to Graduation Building will finish design and begin construction at the end of the next fiscal year. And Lincoln High School will grow vertically through the year as construction progresses. Health and safety projects funded by the 2017 bond will include safety upgrades, fire alarm, lead paint, asbestos, roofs, ADA, radon systems, and new ultra-low lead-filtered water stations. And the Board of Directors is engaged in conversations for November 2020 election to consider a resiliency bond program focused on immediate needs and completion of Benson High School. Staff have identified technology, curriculum, and special education classrooms for possible instructional improvements, and roofs, mechanical systems, security, seismic, and ADA projects are prioritized for facility improvements. And next slide, please. And now we get to our proposed budget. So the current proposed budget required by law consists of five separate major funds, including a general fund, based on the funding levels fourth in the governor's recommended budget. This was developed using the full funding level of $9.0 billion for the Biennium, for the K-12 state school fund, and includes full funding for the Student Success Act and High School Success Act. It is important to note that the 2021 budget does not include any financial impacts as a result of the COVID pandemic yet. However, the district's investment plan takes into account those financial impacts in relationship to our district priorities and strategic plan. We may not know the total financial impact of COVID-19 in time to fully and finally adjust our budget prior to the statutorily required deadline of June 30, 2020. We anticipate a special session of the Oregon Legislature to discuss the economic impacts and resulting shortfalls in the coming weeks. And we are also advocating for additional resources through the Federal Cares Act. Next slide, please.
Sorry, Claire.
There we go. And the PPS revenue shortfall, it's not a pretty picture. And the PPS revenue shortfall, it's not a pretty picture. The economic fallout of the pandemic will cause significant revenue shortfall for PPS. We continue to adapt, and despite these revenue constraints, we remain determined to align resources to a set of prioritized action steps that will strengthen our organization, support educators, and accelerate outcomes for our students. On May 20, 2020, The State Economist released the updated revenue forecast for the current biennium. Oregon's revenue shortfall will affect the PPS budget in three main areas. In one, the state school funding and a $40 million or 7.7% loss of state school funding for the 2021 year. In the high school success funding, also known as Measure 98, its programs in dropout prevention, career technical education, and college educational opportunities, we are losing $4.1 million or 35%. And then the Student Success Act, Student Investment Account, in March 2020, we submitted our SIA application for approval to the ODE, Oregon Department of Ed, totaling $39 million. And now it's estimated that we'll lose 13.65 or 37% of that funding. So overall, that's a $57,750,000 worth of funding. And next slide, please, and I'll turn it back to Craig to talk about how we're going to reconcile with those lost resources.
Thank you, Claire. So given the significant anticipated shortfall, we will need to make reductions to balance our budget. Our departments are utilizing our approach of targeted universalism and prioritizing our spending plan so it's aligned to the tangible steps outlined in our strategic plan for next year. Reductions will be made to those areas of staffing and materials outside of the focus and priorities outlined in the emerging strategic plan. This meant that while we are prioritizing investments directly supporting students, we did not offer across-the-board reductions. Instead, we use an equitable formula that did not overly burden nor benefit single student groups, schools, and/or departments. It also means that despite the magnitude of reductions, we understand that we need to preserve sufficient central office capacity to achieve our goals and systemically support school communities and maintain organizational coherence. This story of reductions of public education is unfortunately a familiar one, and as we face dire financial projections, we understand our decisions will have a negative impact on certain programs and staff. We will be guided by observance of our strategies and vision and our commitment to racial equity and social justice. And I'll turn it over to Danny.
So we just wanted to point out that our approach to making budget reductions was part of a collective process and review. Cross-functional teams, including the superintendent's leadership team, principals, and other key senior leaders, utilize student, staff, and community feedback from our Student Success Act engagement process to design our overarching plan. Principals were consulted in setting priorities for instructional and operational expenditures for 2020 through 2021 and have helped prioritize tiered budget reductions to meet the funding levels still to be determined. At several key decision points, we applied the racial equity, social justice lens to ensure that our reductions were in alignment with our values, our theory of action, and emerging strategic plan. And the next slide. So as we look forward, we know that this is a journey and that we're going to continue to collaborate and consult with key stakeholders. So we do want to signal that there will be continued opportunities for community engagement. We'll be holding focus groups, a virtual town hall, and an open survey. We'll continue to collaborate with our partners and stakeholders, including students, families, district partners, and community leaders. We also want to make sure that we're thinking about how we can collectively advocate at the state and at the federal level for increased support of public schools. And as Claire mentioned, there will be a special legislative session where we may see potential other changes to the K-12 district budgets.
And I'll just add, as we conclude this, that in the coming weeks, we'll communicate with impacted programs and staff as more specific reduction and investment decisions are made. As a leadership team, we are committed to living into our role as caring, empathetic, and adaptive, and see this commitment to a proactive communication as essential, and we really are grateful for the board's flexibility and patience as we build this budget in a time of unprecedented challenges and the pandemic. So on June 11, the board will be asked to approve this budget after seeing much more detail and investment plan, and then you're scheduled to vote for adoption on June 23.
So thank you for your patience and indulging us getting through a lengthy presentation, directors. It's not every day, however, that we paint the picture and the context for the elements that will constitute a comprehensive multi-year strategic plan. You only heard system shift work for the coming school year. Our hope is to launch into a new school year with the other pieces completed. That should provide a pretty clear roadmap and blueprint for the next number of years that should march us forward with some enhanced indicators for how the vision is coming alive. So we're excited to have presented this to you tonight. Kudos and appreciation to dozens of staff who've contributed along the way and for preparing these documents and presentation for you this evening. So I'll turn it back over to you, Chair, to facilitate the conversation or any questions you may have of staff.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you for that deep context that you provided before the budget decision. So we'll just open it up to the board first to really go through. We have our budget book, but to go through the strategic framework that's just been laid out for us and maybe start with a little more discussion around the thinking on the cuts specific to the general fund? Or open it up to others for questions? I think the buckets that we saw on the last slide are pretty straightforward in terms of how we can make up the shortfall from cares, furlough, hiring freeze, SIA, and Measure 98. It's easy for us to understand more what those look like, but maybe a bit of broader discussion around general fund framework for decision-making.
Go ahead, Scott.
Could we get that slide up? We're going to ask questions about that.
The proposed budget reconciliation slide, is that the one you're talking about?
Correct. I just want to-
Yeah, like two slides from the end.
Yeah. I just want to go through those to make sure we're all on the same page in our understanding of that and that I'm not making any assumptions or others aren't making assumptions about what exactly those mean. So whoever can share.
Director Bailey, as I think Director or as Board Manager Powell, I believe, is putting it up there.
Thank you.
There we go.
Okay, so question, so first line, oops, back the other one. Next slide, no, other way.
Slide 20.
Excellent, thank you. So the $8.7 million means we're assuming we're going to get reimbursed that much for COVID-related expenses. Is that correct?
It's our, it's PPS's allocation of the Cares Act, and there's, we certainly have more than $8.7 million of expenses that would qualify there. That's correct.
Okay.
Federal funding.
And I'm clear on the next line. That's the-
And that's coming through the state, correct, Claire?
It goes from the US Department of Ed to the Oregon Department of Ed and then on to us. And I heard today that the Oregon Department of Ed has submitted their application to the US Department of Ed, and they're awaiting approval. And as soon as they get approval, then it'll come through our grant system.
Awesome, that's great to know. I'm clear on the second line, that's the current instituted furlough, which again, I think is, was a great move. The third line, in terms of hiring freezes, is that for noneducator staff only, or is that include educators?
So the purchasing and hiring freeze, combination of the hiring freezes is froze all positions as we were shutting down, and it would take, you know, a specific approval to be able to hire, but quite frankly, hiring right now has not been our priority. We've actually really slowed down in those regards as we're awaiting the, you know, how the economy is going, you know, what we can expect, which we've gotten more information now. So that and all purchasing required an executive leadership team membership, a member to approve a purchase before it was made when we shut down. So mainly COVID-related purchasing, like cleaning supplies, computers, hotspots, those were things I approved, and most everything else waited and was put off.
Okay, in terms of hiring, I'm thinking about this coming school year, if we have teachers who retire, for example, are we talking about freezing those positions?
This is a purchasing and hiring freeze that occurred in 1920 in order to carry over $8.9 million into the 2021 year. So we will see our, we're our-
Okay, so this is already basically happened.
This is happening in 1920. Yes, that's correct.
And you said 1920, and I was thinking, are we back with the Spanish Flu or?
Sorry, 2019, 20.
2020 school year, yeah. Okay. The SIA reductions means basically we're going to tear down our SIA plan to reflect this funding.
Yes.
Same for Measure 98.
Yes.
Okay.
Just to clarify, can I just add on to that, Scott? Just to clarify, we actually are getting a $39 million, and then 11, $39 million for the student investment accounts and 11 million for the Measure 98s. So these are reductions and increases that we had anticipated, but they're not actual reductions of the last year's.
Right. To be clear about that.
For the two sources of, to the two source of revenues, that there's different answer. So for Measure 98, we were at full funding in 2019, 20. So we are reducing $4.1 million as we go into 2021. SIA, we, this is new money that was coming for 2020, 2020, 21, and that was $39 million, and now we're going to have 39 minus 13,650.
So approximately 25 million.
A third left.
It is new money for 2021. It hasn't, it was not in the budget in 1920.
So that's 25 million essentially.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, and just to clarify, the, again, the $12 million reduction in general fund is for, for this company?
Needed in 2020, 21.
Okay.
So we need to reduce $12.3 million in our general.
So that's an item that potentially could be reduced by either the legislature through tapping into rainy day funds or through the board reducing reserve requirements. Is that correct?
So you would hear from me a discussion about the four-year term of this recession and how there is a need for us to save some-
I'm not asking for that, I'm just asking a potential question.
Yes.
That's, okay, that's all. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, and I want to acknowledge there are questions in terms of if and how we would pace that spending. Sorry. I appreciate what you were going to say, I just wanted to kind of get to make sure I understood that point.
I would recommend a look at a four-year plan on how we're going to get through this four-year shortfall of revenue, four years of revenue shortfalls.
And, and of course, potentially, Congress could come to its census and send some money to schools throughout the country, which is, sometimes I feel like that's Santa Claus. But we'll, we'll see if something transpires there.
If you're leaving, oh, sorry, Scott, I was going to add on to that point.
Can I just finish? I've got a whole set of other questions, but I'll let other people rotate in at this point. Just a final note, I was on a Zoom town hall with three legislators, one of whom said, "Don't take for granted a special session. School districts need to advocate strongly now to make sure that happens." And I'll stop there, thanks.
I was just going to quickly jump in and say that the, actually, Santa Claus has delivered some funding already, so unlike a lot of years, maybe we, maybe there will be another round that's going to help for the schools in the future, because there does seem to be an appetite right now, at least for, for some stimulus funding. And along those lines, this is not a solution in any way, but I do want to keep on the table the idea of going to the city of Portland for some of the Cares Act funding that they received. So again, the city received $114 million, Multnomah County received, I think, $25 million. That funding is not specifically for those governments, it is for the city of Portland and Multnomah County. It is limited in its use, and it's limited in terms of how we could apply it here, but I know the city is having conversations right now with cities out in East Multnomah County and potentially helping them with some of their, you know, COVID-19 costs. And again, it's somewhat limited, but the place where I think it would be applicable and, and sort of fall under the, the rules that US Treasury has laid out will be in reopening schools in the fall. There's going to be significant costs related to that, and we keep hearing from you all about what those costs are going to be, and distancing, and sanitizing, and additional staff to do that. Those are very clearly costs related to coronavirus eligible for Cares Act funding. And, and I want to stress that 114 million and 25 million is not enough for the city of Portland and Multnomah County, so we would still have to get in line, but reopening schools is essential for reopening anything that we do, and it's essential for, for economic activity. So assuming that it's safe and that we're going down that road, some of those costs, we may be able to ask nicely of our fellow governments and potentially get some reimbursement for it. So again, not going to solve the $50 million problem, but even a million or two would come in very handy.
So that's a great point, Director Scott. One of the questions I had was these costs that are built into just the lift of the reopenings, and it may be a reopening and then a reshutting down or selectively shutting down if there's a geographic outbreak. So I'm wondering about sanitizer, signage, all the things you've got to do to basically restructure the physical environment in order for individuals to occupy the same spaces, in this case, schools, and then other things like if face coverings are still required from an equity standpoint, and PPS can be providing that to staff and our students, you know, voluntary temperature checks, those whole, you know, any sort of testing. I'm wondering, is that built into the budget? And if it's, one question. And then I guess the secondary question is, is that a space potentially, just to Director Scott's point of potential conversation with the city, because I'm sure the other districts are going to have the same needs that we're going to have as well.
So I could hear the first question about all those costs being built into the budget, but I could not hear the second question.
Well, the second, the second piece was that I'm sure the other school districts that are within the boundaries of the city of Portland are going to have similar issues with both the reopenings and requirements about face coverings and actually temperature checks and testing as things evolve. Is that the potential place to go to the city? Or in if the city doesn't have enough funds for that, do we have funds set aside in our budget to cover those items? Because that is sort of the essential thing to reopen in the fall.
So we will have to prioritize those items. So when we were actually having, we've been having lots, many conversations in this area. And I can tell you that in the maintenance and custodial- And I can tell you that in the maintenance and custodial areas, in particular, facilities, we have not, we are not targeting reductions. We're just kind of holding, keeping our money there because we know we need it there. So as we're looking at that 12.3 million dollar reduction, we're keeping our facilities budgets whole. And so yes, we have actually purchased some items already this year and filled the warehouses. We weren't sure how often, how often we'd be able to get certain supplies and materials. So we do have some on hand and as well as we have, in terms of signage, we have our own capacity in our, in our print shop. But certainly we talked today about making sure we have all the materials there. What's holding us up in terms of getting those things done is that we need to hear from our Oregon Department of Education on June 8th and what guidelines that are coming out. And once, you know, we're already making plans as far as we can go without knowing what our rules are. So we're, you know, creating all our master lists. We have a full series of groups that are meeting and a, our emergency operations center leadership is leading those teams through a process so that we can identify both for instruction, what we need to have in place and in terms of facilities. And all, all the multiple components, human resource issues about who can come to work, who can't come to work. So there's, there's a whole series of things that we're considering and yes, we, we have in particularly thought of that, thought of things that will come through. We're prioritizing what we need to in terms of those plans for continuing online learning. But there, until really saying that, do we have everything set until we will get the guidelines and get some plans laid out? Yes, we, we, we believe we have the money in the budget. However, we also know that we're still, it's like, you know, flying the airplane while you're still building it or whatever they call it, right? So, but we are working with just large districts in Oregon and across the country and learning from each other and reading what other countries are doing and really staying connected from around the world about what is successful as schools reopen. So we're paying attention to other countries that have already reopened.
Thank you, Claire. This is Director Lowry. I just want to say that I am incredibly moved by the work and the effort that the staff has done with the presentation. It makes me proud to be part of PPS that we are clearly stating that we are evaluating all black and native students and that we know that we need to make significant system changes and some of those will be painful. And naming that, we have a tendency as a well intentioned organization to say lots of things and like Danny said, not a long. But when we get down into the nitty gritty of the hard work, we pull back. And what I see here is that our staff has done this incredible hard work. And Claire, you just said, you know, we're flying the airplane while building it. But what the staff has presented tonight is this clear, unflinching understanding of, of what matters most. And that, you know, for me, we, we don't know. And, you know, those questions about hand sanitizer or the other pieces of, you know, the nuts and bolts of how in the world are we going to deal with all of this complex logistical issues as we face this, you know, challenge of the pandemic? What brings me hope is that we know what matters and we know who we are and we know that we're dedicated to all of our students and especially to our students who've been underserved and continue to be underserved. So I just want to commend our staff. And I think, you know, if you, this, this presentation was filled with grounding in the vision, grounding in change theory, grounding in what needs to happen so that we stop as a district just giving lip service to the fact that our black students have been failed, but really, really begin to change. And it'd be so easy in this economic nightmare and in this crazy pandemic time to say, well, we can't really do anything. To go back to the status quo. And I am, like, I'm getting emotional, especially with, you know, what happened in Minneapolis today. The fact that like we are refusing to do that, we are refusing to say we are in this unprecedented time, we are losing all this money. So it's okay if we fail our black kids. And what we're saying is we refuse to continue to, I think, what did Danny say? That racism is, isn't just an incident you can prove, but it's this like systemic oppression and that it's pernicious and it's embedded in our classrooms. So how do we, you know, change that? And, and we don't have all the details right this second of what the state is going to do or if Congress is. I think Director Bailey said something about get their heads out of their asses, but he probably said it better than that. So I just, I am, I am so proud to be part of PPS with the work that the team has done. And like the clarity around where we're going and how we are going to, we are going to change this district. And my heart has been broken because I could see this realized future potential with the Student Success Act money. And Julia, I know you were one of the people fighting for that. That 39 million dollars is going to make a huge difference to our students. And so my heart has been broken that we are not going to be able to deliver on all this stuff. But I feel so much better tonight because it's like, okay, we don't have the money, but we have the will, we have the dedication, we have the people, we have the plan. And we're going to get there no matter the step back. So I thank the staff for your bravery. Thank you for your clarity. And your willingness to fight the good fight, even when it would have been easier to just say, we're in a pandemic and an economic downturn. We're going to keep to the status quo. So thank you. That wasn't really a question.
We need it now more than ever.
I think Director Lowry, really appreciate your comment. And one of the things that really stands out to me from that presentation and that grounding in our values is Superintendent and Deputy Superintendent Quayar, when you're talking specifically about the system shift around pedagogy and curriculum, you're talking about adding some programming and adding staff in ways that are aligned with our vision. So that clearly means ceasing to do some of the things that we have historically done that haven't served our kids very well. And specifically our black and brown kids very well. So I'm a little, I'm curious about some of that list that you went through Craig that represents new investments. And your conversations around the trade offs there.
Yes, ma'am. Director Konstam, I mean, you bring up a really good question. And again, I just wanted to reiterate what we stated throughout the presentation was that we are staying core to our, our, our focus specific to our, our black and native students, which is clearly, which is clearly stated in our theory of action. We're staying core and focused to how we can continue to stay steadfast at supporting our most underserved schools and our youth. And how we, just again, like how we talked around the, we talked about the importance of target universalism and how we, we build out around our, our youth and our communities that truly need our support first and foremost. And so when we talk about trade offs, again, keeping that in mind in terms of what our core purpose and our core value is and staying true to that. We heard it a lot throughout the presentation, specific to our racial equity and social justice work. And how that is, and how that is braided through everything that we do in terms of how we're resourcing schools, how we're providing supports and services and what our key investments are. I know at a later time, we can talk about in more granular detail, you know, some of the specific investments in terms of what that looks like with trade offs. But I, but I am, I do want to echo Director Lowry's sentiments that I am also extremely optimistic and very, very ecstatic and excited about the opportunities and what's ahead for our children here in PPS. It's a very bright future indeed. And even though with the challenges that we have been facing in the last several months through this pandemic, this team, this community, all of our stakeholders, internal and external, have showed their resilience and perseverance. And, and, and the coming together for us to be able to continue to move forward and what's best for children is truly exciting. So I, I know, I know that doesn't necessarily answer your question directly, Director Konstam, but my response would be is that we are optimistic that we can continue to deliver on these promises.
So I have just a follow up question on that same track. So I really appreciate the focus at the very beginning, the laser focus that Director Lowry mentioned on the two groups of students who PPS has historically really failed and not provided adequate supports and it was always some other time to make investments. So I'm wondering if, to translate this big budget document into something that's real, what, what would, how would you, how would we describe to say parents of Harriet Tubman Middle School, Boise Elliott Humboldt Elementary School, Jefferson High School? How, how would this budget and the investments translate into measurable supports and achievement, achievement gains and student performance gains in schools that are in the historic Almina neighborhood? Because otherwise it looks like a bunch, a bunch of different fun categories and investments and strategies. Like maybe let's make it real for, if you're a parent and trying to understand how we're prioritizing those students in this budget.
Hi, this is Dacey. I guess I would encourage you to, I would encourage you to think about our work in two ways, in two dynamic ways. So I think that a lot of times when people talk about sort of like, what's, what's the, what's the, what am I getting? What, what, what is someone else not getting? That's, that's sort of like zero sum.
Actually, I'm just trying to think about how we, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I, that's not the route I'm going to. I'm trying to get through like, how, how, how do we translate our values that were stated? How do we describe that to, to parents in a, in a way that's meaningful to them in terms of their students?
Sure. So, so I, I think that, I, I wasn't saying that you were going there, but I, I think that a lot of times people think about that, about the sort of like, what, what am I getting? What is someone else not getting? So I think that we have to approach this both as a thinking in terms of a system and then also thinking about like the culture and then the individuals. So if you look at some of the schools that you mentioned, I think that we could, we could clearly point to where we've adjusted staffing. So in terms of like resources, where those are schools that have a different level of staffing. Those are schools that would be sort of like first in line for increased social, emotional learning supports. Really wanting to think about how we are instilling restorative practices. Wanting to make sure that the, that sort of those staff are part of receiving support and additional professional development. So in terms, if you looked at sort of all of those different categories, you could see how each of those schools would be sort of prioritized. And you could sort of trickle down and kind of draw each of those investments in there. At the same time though, I think the, the other piece that I, I hope doesn't get lost, and I know that we're talking about funding, is wanting to make sure that we're really attentive to, if we're going to change as a system, we don't just go from like zero to systems change, that we do have to attend to like individual development. We, and we have to build a culture. And so a lot of the prioritization, a lot of the things that parents and children might see that's different is that we're trying to build a culture that is more reflective, that's adaptive, that's embracing and adept at looking at, applying our, our equity lens, being explicit about racial implications, reviewing data, thinking about how their day, their classroom, their building is different so that we're creating a more holistic culture around racial equity and social justice. So I, I think it's, I think it's, it's both and we have to really sort of think about our investments in, in both of those ways.
I, can I jump in? I, I feel like the, there, there are communities that have been told, you know, that, you know, we're, we've got you, we, we've covered you. And so I'm wondering, I mean, I think Julie, I'm not sure if this is the question or not, but we're dealing with, like you say, the parents of Harriet Tubman and Boise Elliott that have been historically harmed. How can we talk about this? What will they see on the ground that, that makes them? I mean, we, we have a lot of trust building to do in, in some of these communities, including the black community, you know, particularly. And how can we message this grand plan, which I'm in complete favor of, by the way, to assure them that things will be different this time? When, when it's like the Charlie Brown and Lucy thing, you know? We've, we're working in a community that has lost trust over the last 50 years or, or longer even, as you shared in your presentation. So.
I, I think you captured it.
How do we, how do we message to those communities that have been told for five decades or longer, five decades in my own experience, that things are going to get better? You know, are we going an extra step to do that reassuring or do we have outcomes that they can look for? I think the messaging will be really important.
Just thank you for that, Director Lowry, because I spent part of this afternoon reading this, this book that's The Chronology and History of Desegregation, Integration of Public Schools, 1960 to 1982. And what's surprising is although the language is very dated, is how it really, the same issues that the community is raising around black achievement levels are, you know, from 50 years ago are still very much present. And so what I, I was just trying to get at is like, you know, how do we make this, this real? Because I think there is just a long-term trust issue. And certainly with a lot of the conversations happening around the state with the budget that the expectation is like, hey, this is a year in which we can't make investments, in which, you know, people should be, you know, we're going to, we're going to settle for the status quo. So I think we should be trying to portray a, a sense of optimism and be able to be really explicit.
Yeah. So I think it's, I think it's comprehensive. So if, Roseanne, if you wouldn't mind going to slide number nine.
I, you know, and also I love Danny, thank you for saying it's not like a piece of pie. So if there's more for one community, that means there's like less of a piece for others. This is really like embracing this culture of like, there's enough for everyone. I can tell you just from my own work, Prosper Portland and the city of Portland and.
Slide eight, Roseanne.
The last affordable housing fund the city did and, and Metro just passed are, are both in their language explicit, explicitly aimed towards communities of color with the understanding that those communities, you know, experience disparate harm. And so I think I'm really glad to see and very proud also, Ailey, like what you said of, of seeing this plan and how our budget, you know, maps to that. And also a little bit skeptical too, because I'm from the community that's been told, you know, things are going to get better for a long time.
Danny, before, Danny, can I just hop in for one second before we get back to some of the, I think, specific strategies that you're going to talk about? You know, the second large book that we all received at our home was the school profile book. And it's so interesting to look through those. Back to your point, Danny, about our staffing formulas. I mean, four years ago, we did a, we started a very radical thing. Thank you, Michelle, for the visual. Started a very radical thing, which was the beginning of completely retooling the staffing formula so that it wasn't just based on enrollment, it was based on need. And that formula has been, has evolved significantly under Superintendent Guerrero's leadership and just in the past couple of years. And so now if you look through at the individual schools, we can see that the levels of staffing are significantly different based on who that school population is and where the achievement has been and how those kids have historically been served. And I think what we're saying here with our values is that that's, that's one of our tools that we're going to hold harmless in this process. We're not going to abandon that strategy. And I, I think when we think about. think when we think about what we tell parents, that's a really good place to go back to. Look at, look at the, the staffing levels of, you know, Boise Elliott Humboldt relative to other schools. Is it enough? No. But do we, we have, I think, Dani, you're probably about to talk about some of the specific new areas of investment in terms of intervention and all that. But I would encourage everybody to just really take a dive into the school profiles and see how different they are.
I was just gonna add that what we've tried to do is sort of place this, if you wouldn't mind placing the documents on top of budget books, because they're really a sort of like a frame in which you can sort of look at those. So there's a slide that is the next slide after the one that you see, that's a chart, that has the system shifts. And so if you look at that sort of, the detail about the first system shift, there's a lot of work around developing our community engagement framework. And the, the detail of the community engagement framework is about, is a set of actions around building trust, sort of like reaching outside of the walls of our, of our individual schools, and really thinking about how we build this like collective movement, where we're building trust focused on our, our priorities, and really sort of like inviting the community in to share their lived experience, to share their expertise, to braid it with the experience of our, of our staff. That coupled with sort of like additional professional learning, upgrades and safety, upgrades to safety, as well as the, the implementation of our guaranteed and viable curriculum, where we're really focused in on culturally responsive strategies, where students are agents, have agency over their own learning. Those things all taken together with that, with that specific focus on the student groups, that is the, that's the sort of like culture and the change that we're trying to build. We could, you know, point to the specific things, but it really is the combination of all, of all of these there. So that the sort of, if you imagine like a funnel, the highest level is sort of looking at our vision, getting into our goals, getting into our system shifts, the work around the graduate profile that's upcoming, filling out the rest of our strategic plan, and then this high level sort of like tranches of, of investment in student success, professional learning development, and safety and modernization. And then that next level of detail, like Chair Konstantin reiterated, was like, and then this is sort of like going down to the school level.
I guess I would just, I know we don't, we're not gonna have a lot of time in this budget discussion between when we have a community discussion and approval, but I think we need to get really sharp because I can't, as a parent, if somebody had told me, like, we're gonna help your students through targeted universalism, that wouldn't have been a tangible, like something that I could understand. And when I look at just the levels of achievement and the progress that needs to be made, I think we just need to be super crisp, and it's not, somebody else isn't going to get something because we're going to give these groups of students, because equity, that's not what equity is. But I just think we're gonna, we've got a super strong, I think, statement of values. Now we just have to translate it into, here's what that means. And just while we've got this slide up here, I guess, one of the things that I'm concerned about is that there's no checkmark with safety and modernization around racially equity design systems and structure. Some of our worst buildings are in Albinah, the historic Black neighborhood. And as I view the, sort of, if you look at how much capital investment we have, operational dollars, that we'd want to have that go hand in hand. So I'm just, for later discussion, curious about why there's not a checkmark in that particular box.
We, I think we also need to understand that the word safety is viewed very differently by, you know, there's like a cultural piece there, where safety means different things to different groups. And so if we're, we're talking about safety, I think we need to be very clear about who we're talking about safety for, and, and what does that mean? Does that mean like physical safety? Does that mean the absence of like environmental things like asbestos and lead? So I feel like every time I hear that word, safety, it raises red flags for me personally, because I feel like I'm not thinking of safety in the same way as the, the way it's being used. And I'm just guessing on that. I actually don't know. Safety for who?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's just, it's one of those words that's got a lot of.
Well, so if I may, Director DePass, when, when we're talking about safety, if, Roseanne, if you can go to slide, I believe it is 12 or maybe 13, culture, no, the next one. Sorry, the next one. Here we go. A culture of physical and emotional safety. In the context of our strategic, our strategic plan and our, in our vision document, we morphed the two together. We both think about space, as Director Brim Edgers alluded to, and I think also allude to, to the social, emotional wellbeing of our students through safety, right? When we talk to our students, they're, you know, as, as we were having early conversations about safety a couple of years, or a year ago, that's what was brought up by students. It was both the physical space and the, the, the social, emotional space. And so as you look into the strategic plan, strategy one, it looks at MTSS, it looks at the, our students' social, emotional, and behavior needs, and identifying strategies through our MTSS framework, to make sure that our adults in the, in our organization are well-equipped to support them. So just wanted to provide that context. And I think in, in this context, culture of physical and emotional safety is both and. And then I, just to touch base on the, on that slide with the checkmarks, we accidentally have a, have the wrong PowerPoint on here, so we will make sure that, that it's updated to reflect what you all have been expressing. So just wanted to make sure we don't get stuck with the, with the checkmarks, and we focus on the content.
Thank you, Jonathan. And Director DePass, this is Craig. You surfaced a really important question around a culture of physical and emotional safety, and Jonathan did a great job at really teeing it up for us to enter that space for a little deeper dialogue. And I wanted to go ahead and introduce Brenda Mardneck, our Chief of Student Support Services, who is going to provide a little more of a deeper explanation around this specific shift, Director DePass.
Good evening, Board. I just wanted to talk a little bit more about creating that physical and emotional space. As we know, especially right now during the pandemic, a lot of our students are experiencing a lot of trauma, vicarious traumatization, increased mental health needs, and additional social, emotional issues. And so this strategic plan also encompasses that culture of that physical and emotional safety. So our physical safety really is about externally. So we're thinking about external supports, how we, how we use space in a safe way, how we interact with our environment, how the environment interacts with us. And then the culture of emotional safety really is more of an inward approach, how we are interpreting the world. And so a lot of times, we need both of those in order for our students and our staff and our families to have that sense of safety. And so that's really what this strategy is talking about. It's really combining those trauma-informed practices through that social, emotional learning support, adding restorative justice, and then also working with our facilities, departments to make sure that our spaces feel safe to students in an external way as well. Am I able to answer your question?
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate that. I guess I just want to, you know, remind everybody that, you know, there's been an incident of a bird watcher in Central Park, and a Black man was just killed recently. I mean, it happens every day, but a couple that have been in the news. And so this, I appreciate the, the facilities aspect of safety. I appreciate the safety, the emotional, social, emotional aspect, and also just want to bring to the fore that there's, in popular culture, this idea of safety and how it specifically relates to Black and Brown bodies, it's a different definition of what feels safe. And so I would like us to be intentional about explaining what we mean by safety, and not assuming that we all have the same understanding about what safety means. Because, I mean, the stuff that's in the news is traumatizing for people, and, and, and these are people that are entitled also to, to a sense of safety that didn't get it. So.
So Director DePass.
Well, I would like to talk about, in the, the blue piece of the PowerPoint presentation, it does talk about a caring adult. And we do want to make sure that students feel like they have a caring adult in their life. And then that's the other reason why we're continuing with the Successful School Survey. One of the areas is around safety, and then we disaggregate that by ethnicities, by gender, and then also by grade level. We do it with teachers, and students, and families. So that we're really starting to understand what safety means to other students, and so that we can actually dig in, look at that data with our school leaders, and then help to inform our school improvement plan, so that we can really understand and support all of our students to make sure they have a caring adult, and that they are feeling safe, whatever their definition of safe means for them.
So I would just add, Director DePass, that, that part of the work, and I think it's, we talked a little bit about it in the presentation, is around these sort of cross-functional teams that really interrogate our use of language, so that we don't, other, other children and other different, different student groups, when we use words like safety. I think Chief Mardneck did a great job of sort of talking about like what our intentions are, but we know that when we apply a racial equity lens, and we know that when we are thinking critically about our use of language, about our, our allocation of resources, the selection of providers in which we sort of engage with, that there has to be that sort of interrogation of, of, of the, of the impacts. And we heard from students directly over the last two years about sort of having a much, a much more comprehensive view of what safety is. And I think that that's, that's the, that's the culture part, where, you know, we're gonna, we, we have these direct investments in improvements to both physical and emotional safety, but then the culture-building work is around those cross-functional, cross, cross-cultural dialogue around how, how we really target those impacts for Black and Native students.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for those clarifications. And I'm still not hearing, it doesn't have to happen tonight, an acknowledgement of that, that word, the word safety means different, and the survey's great. It's a customer satisfaction survey, basically. And I haven't read the survey, so I can't even comment on it. Anyway, we can move on. Thank you.
If I can, if I can try to wrap up this part of, or the theme of this conversation, I don't want to miss the forest here. What, what we've tried to sort of present here this evening are the organizational changes that are required in the school system, a coherent set of strategies that are going to be able to drive improvement at all schools, but especially the, the student experience in our most underserved schools. And we believe if we take care of those most vulnerable historical underserved students first, and we differentiate for them, that the good work and the professional capacity building that will happen, the attention to school conditions, will be good for the system as a whole and all students, that all boats will rise. And so we could go into our notes as a team, and some of the guiding questions about, you know, what might appear like a bureaucratic blueprint, you know, starts with, as a result of this work, what will be different for a student who walks in this, one of these schools? And, and those are actually a set of guiding questions. We're excited about engaging students from those communities about, and families, because you're right, it's their lived experience. It isn't mine. I didn't grow up here. I need to understand that. But how do we bridge their current lived experience and marry their hopes and aspirations with the vision that, that we've laid out? And so if I think back to my time as a teacher, I understood that I need to have a keen sense of where each of my students were at in the moment, and how to get them to the expectations that I hold for them, in partnership with their families, in partnership with partners in the community. And we have to do the same thing organizationally. We're proposing to differentiate our support to those school communities who have never had, I would argue, the conditions to ensure success for the students that attend them, so much so that members of those communities often make other choices, other choices that might better attend to their cultural affirmation, their sense of self-identity, their sense of safety. And I'm not talking about earthquake resiliency, though that matters too, but I'm talking about sort of, of the kind of ambiance and conditions that are gonna, that are important to establish the relational trust between an instructor and a student, so that the readiness to learn factor is there. And so the, the work that we picked out in these five system shifts, you know, are the ones that we felt were sort of fundamental to start with, because they talk about solidifying what we have begun in core instruction, creating well-rounded experiences, starting with funding and extra resourcing, as we've proven the first two years in this administration, in the budget books, around resourcing to a greater degree, not more, just what they need, and having to add in these school communities. So you have a proposed budget, it reflects our full funding. If you do sort of a cursory analysis, you will see that there is additional staffing to ensure that we can provide additional programming, and that the experience for students is vastly improved from what it's been. And so what we're saying tonight is, even though this book is the budget we wish we would have had, even though we're gonna get less, and thankfully, it's a little bit better than the doomsday that we thought it was going to be, our values and our strategies are unchanged. We're still gonna take those nickels, and we're still gonna devote them to doing the work that will be good for our Black and Native kids, and teach us lessons, and, and help us enrich and raise the quality of our, of our experience for all our students across the district. So we can, we can go into, you know, enumerating the pages and the school by school about where we thought, you know, the additional APs, additional intervention teachers, the reading training, you know, all the various sort of menu for, for the schools that had gathered into a cohort specifically for the reason to receive specialized support, whether it's coaching, whether it's supervision, whether it's attention from central office. That has been our mode of operation since, since kicking off. And so we're only proposing to elevate that to yet another degree. And so the kinds of things that we talk about in our vision, that we want to be true as a school experience, these are the places where we want to ensure they are especially present. And so in the budget, you would read the additional arts educators, additional elective teachers, supports for the seventh period in Tubman, Bowman, and George, the additional reading intervention PD for the teachers to catch kids up to grade level expectations, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The contracts for community partners to come in and create extended learning time on after-school weekends in the summer. You know, those are sort of the mechanics. But what we're proposing to do is to make sure there's reinforced additional academic and social, emotional supports are in place. So I, I would, I would love to sort of work with the community actually to sort of capture what the experience has been, and the one that from the point of view of a second grader, or a sixth grader, or a 10th grader, would be the one that we're working towards, that I hope that we're able to materialize and make sure in, in as rapid accelerated time as possible. we're able to materialize and make sure in in as rapid accelerated time as as possible.
Superintendent Agro, this is Director Lowry. And while we're sitting here having this conversation, I am just feeling frustrated. And I don't know if it's that it it feels like, you know, we talk about the trust we need to earn back with our community and the fact that, you know, that all those things Danny read about how the segregated school and how we just did so much damage to students. It's like sometimes that our very board doesn't always trust our leadership. And I I feel like, you know, our job is to hold the superintendent and the staff accountable and we need to be asking deep questions. And I think Michelle, especially what you raised about that word safety. How how is that interpreted? And I think Danny, that goes to what you were saying about how, you know, for white people, safety might mean spaces of whiteness. And for people of color, you know, that that can be really damaging. And so I think those are really good things that we've unearthed, but there there's almost a level in some of our questions and our here of like not not trusting that staff really are living into this new way of being. And that I I don't know how to articulate it, but I just feel like I I feel like we're just so not on the same page around how we like support the amazing work our superintendent and staff are doing to move the district forward and to really follow that North Star. Like, you know, I believe in it and I believe in our staff. And I'm also gonna ask them questions and say, hey, we need to talk about safety in different ways. Or hey, we need to, you know, that question about operations and how are we gonna keep our buildings clean and is that being cut? You know, there's there's important questions to be asked, but it sometimes it feels like when we have the staff present, it almost becomes combative. And and part of me wonders if, you know, we have this narrative in our community that PPS isn't to be trusted, that PPS isn't good. And how do we, as a cultural board and in these meetings, continue to perpetuate that? Like, I I feel like, I mean, I don't know if I'm articulating it well, but I think we need to be honoring the fact that there's been failures and that there's been disappointed and there is broken trust. And yet it doesn't feel like we're all working together in the same direction for the same good. And I'm not sure I'm, I just have this overwhelming emotion and I'm not sure how I explain it. But I I'm just like, I was so hopeful at this presentation and I'm just starting to feel sad that like it almost feels like staff is having to defend that that we really mean it and we're really gonna work towards this, if that makes sense. And maybe I'm just overreacting, but I I've just had this uncomfortable sense for like the last half hour as we've talked. And I don't know how we as a board do that fine dance of holding staff accountable and yet also encouraging and supporting them. So if any of you have any great wisdom.
I I have a little bit of my own personal wisdom. I can't speak for anybody else. But I feel like I'm a super supporter of the district. Super proud of the staff. I mean, the staff works day and night. And as a board member, it's okay for me to ask questions, especially as the only black member here who's spoken. And I'm getting defensive now, too. I want to be able, as your colleague, to be a par- a partner in doing excellent work. I I come from a background where I am suspicious and have a lack of trust. And I'm here doing the work because I want to see things change. I'm also super hopeful about hopeful about the direction that the district is heading. It's the best thing I've heard ever. All of the strategy, the racial equity policy, I am not criticizing that. And and I'm not criticizing it and it's okay for me to be offer a critical voice of the few times that I'm that that I'm able to speak up on something and it not be a threat. I'm I'm a I'm a colleague of yours. I'm your colleague. I'm here, we're pulling the rope in the same direction. I am not saying anything contrary to that. And it's a it's a it's a both and situation for me. I can both value deeply the work that's happening here and I can offer a critical point as someone that has lived experience. It doesn't look like everybody else here on this call. It's not a threat. It's okay for me to have an opinion and it's okay for me to, the only thing I bring to this meeting is that I can share that myself and my heart and my my love for the district and my love for the staff and that that's all I can have. And it's okay for me to say to be critical. I I can't I can't show up any other way.
And I think it, Michelle, I wasn't targeting you specifically or something that we can.
I did take it personally and and I think it's okay. I mean, it's okay for me to show up with heartfelt gratitude for the staff and for the strategy and it's okay for me to be critical at the same time. It it's not a clear cut either or situation for me.
Yeah, I think I'll just add.
I value the work that everybody's doing here immensely. And I feel like I'm a team member and a and a teammate and a colleague and it's okay for me to be critical.
So I'm gonna offer my my perspective as well. So, you know, I was struck by in this document, a couple of times, it says, the board is accountable for all fiscal matters that significantly influence operations. And I think it's okay to to pressure test and ask questions because that makes us better. And just, I guess, sort of building on sort of Michelle's like lived experience. So if you've had it, if you've had a student who has been quarterly served by PPS, which I have, you're gonna ask questions because like the sometimes the district has said and the district, like, we are the district, we are the man. Some of the district, we have said, like, trust us and we haven't served students. And when you, your own child has not been served, it it's it's hard not to pressure test and and want to be able to assure other parents who students haven't been served that we're going to do the right thing by them. So I, to me, I I don't, I see it as a normal part of the the process. If we all just, you know, there's there's no sense having a board if we're not gonna we're just gonna be presented to and not ask questions that that matter to us.
I think I expressed myself incredibly poorly and it's not that we can't ask questions. And Michelle, I'm not trying to tone police you or tell you not to be critical. And and some of it, some of it is the way the staff responds to board questions. I mean, this this is not all on the board. It's 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 about a broken trust we have and the way we communicate between S L T and board. So this is not all on the board. It's, you know, the board's role is to be, hold accountable, to ask questions, to be critical. But I also think sometimes when we do that, the staff gets defensive and then it it kind of escalates. And so I'm wondering, like, Michelle, you said we're all pulling on the same direction. How do we do that in ways that are effective? Because sometimes it feels like we're talking past each other, that we're not really listening to the questions people are asking. Again, like your point to safety. You know, it's, I just wonder, like, as we're trying to rebuild trust, we're trying to make massive cultural shifts. Like, how do we do that as a staff and a board? And, you know, it's hard, this is a public meeting, so, you know, hi, everybody that's watching. It's hard to be really vulnerable for me to say, like, I have been feeling uncomfortable. And it's not anything that Michelle or Julia, you guys did specifically, but it's just this sense of like there's a combativeness to our conversations sometimes, especially after a presentation. And so it's how do we as the board both support staff and hold them accountable? And how does the staff respond to the board in ways that help us all to move forward? And I'm not sure that that we know how to do that cohesively yet. And that's something I'm interested in us working on. And I think, you know, is vi- is vital as we look at what does it need to be effective as a school board? And there's, you know, studies nationwide about characteristics of effective boards. And asking questions is key. Being critical is key. Bringing lived experience is key. But it's also how do we communicate in ways that we actually hear each other? And I I think that's what we don't always do. And I just gave you all a perfect example of me speaking up and not saying clearly in a way that was understood. So that's that's part of what I'm wrestling tonight. And I think it goes to the heart of what we're talking about is our vision for our district. How do we get there? And how do we build a relationship as a staff and a board? That helps us to be functional, to helps us to hold them accountable, to be critical and also supportive and champion. And that's a, that's a difficult balance, I think.
I think one of the things that's challenging about this conversation is that we're really having two conversations here. We are talking about our deeply held values and vision as a district. And, you know, each of us bring our own personal values and then we're also have expressed values as a as a collective board. But we're also talking about the nitty gritty and let's be real, there are some very painful budget decisions that we're going to have to make here. And they're, it's much, much easier to make them, given that we have a clear framework and clearly articulated values and strategic priorities, which I can tell you has certainly not always been the case in this district. So it's easier, but it's still really hard because we each want and need to do our jobs and we want to dig in and say, okay, if we're not going to be able to provide all the, you know, particular interventions that last year we may have anticipated we'd be able to provide for our neediest students and our neediest schools, what are the ones that we're cutting? What are we leaving off the table? So we're kind of trying to have a conversation at both of those levels about personal values, about collective values and also about specific decisions. And and we do need to have room for both of them because I totally agree with Julia. I think we all bring this into this process that it's it's made better by our hard questions and by each of us bringing our own experiences and our own you know, particular interests and areas of expertise to just dig in. Superintendent, I saw that you looked like you wanted to respond to something there. No.
I mean, I, thank you, Chair. I I appreciate that. I I think there was a request that staff share where we are in the work and we've attempted to kind of capture, well, this is a draft update of what we hope, once we work on the other elements. And there's a whole lot of input and feedback and engagement still remaining so that there's shared ownership. And there's comfort in knowing that the activities and strategies that we select, we believe are gonna be the ones that move the needle. So that when we have a glossy published companion document of a strategic plan that will take us steps forward, hopefully big steps forward towards our vision. I think that's the shared sort of goal here. And so tonight, we wanted to lay out, you know, whether we had lots of resources or now less resources, there's some moves we have to make as an organization to be postured for that kind of organizational change to make a difference for kids in school. And so I I welcome sort of the conversation and sort of reaction to, you know, what do you think about us selecting these five system shifts versus any one of the other ones that we identified in the vision? Do the strategies and the action steps for the coming school year? Do those seem like the right ones? You know, I think those those are, those are good questions for for us to be able to articulate. And and of course, we've said, you know, hold us accountable. The board has set performance goals. And so our task was to identify the activities that are gonna get us to those targets. And even those are a little bit up in the air, just like the money is. You know, how do we now assess outcomes when we have this massive slide in academics and social emotional health of our students? There's no summatives. Our end of the year formatives are out the window. There's gonna be a new baseline is a reality. We still need some way to gauge where our kids are at when we see them again and how are we gonna accelerate growth, not just before this pandemic, but now as a result of the pandemic? And so we do have to refine what those interventions are. And then there's still a question about how do we even deliver those supports? What's the new reality? What's the new delivery model for being able to do that? So if we can find some resources, what does that extra remediation look like? If we can open our schools for small groups of kids in the late summer, which students do we need to bring in first? Because I know we're not serving our students with disabilities in the way that we would all like to be. I know that our students that were in comprehensive support schools for intervention, they're falling behind and they needed additional support intervention. What does it look like to place some extra emphasis in those communities? And then how do we keep pushing the needle on all those other exciting emerging bodies of work? You know, that that's that's what keeps us busy as staff. I think that's what keeps the staff motivated is see that those those bodies of work are shifting and becoming more and more evident when we visit classrooms. You know, that that's the work of of the school district. And so we thought we would model that work has to start with us because we have to set the organizational stage. But there's a lot of work that has to happen with the support of adults in making the vision true, which is what we refer to as the educator essentials. And I'm excited about what students will identify as some of the practical differences in their experiences that we can help support make possible in their schools, because they're gonna be really hungry for that level and kind of engagement when they come back after this long absence. And so if we're gonna reopen and we have an opportunity to create a new kind of delivery model, how do we excite the kids who were already waning in their engagement to come to school? That's a great question, a great design thinking question to to ask our students who's who've been marginalized.
I believe Dr. Valentino, last week, used the verb gamify.
So I I appreciate the conversation that's been happening. I I think part of it has to do with the nature of the documents. So I want to say, first of all, I hugely appreciate staff work on this. I I know you've it it's just an incredibly challenging year, you know, with the pressure, the the preparation of the S I A plan, followed by the 180 degree turn with COVID. And now looking at cuts or we're still not sure what kind of cuts. We don't know what school is gonna look like come September. Incredibly challenging work. I really appreciate the context that the document started with and the presentation started with. I really appreciate that our educational vision is not collecting dust on a shelf, but instead continues to be at the heart of what we do. I appreciate the attention to cross department work to break down silos, which has been a huge issue for this district going back decades and really important to work on. The breadth of what's included in the document is huge. And my question there again for central office staff is, do you have the capacity to do this without exhausting yourselves? Sometimes going slower goes farther. I appreciate the attention to improvements, what you call improvement science, which others call continuous quality improvement. That whole feedback loop of engaging parents and students and staff and how do we do this better? How did that work? What do we need to change in in a constructive way? I'm calling out a little bit around site councils. That's one of the first things I worked on as a parent advocate in 2001 to get site council training because I saw site councils of potentially being a very positive avenue for change. And I'm sure there's probably schools that still do not have a functioning site council now, despite some efforts in that direction. But to see that as part of a system, it would be a big step forward and I'm glad that was called out. Appreciate just building that system of core and enhanced curriculum. You know, crucially important in everything we do and the professional development around making that happen. And I think we've seen improvements in that this year in terms of how that's been embraced at the school level. More to do there, but some big steps already taken. I appreciate the attention to enhancing M T S S and taking that to the next level to improving our curriculum and results for students learning English. Such it, there's just for me a whole lot to, wow, this is great. Well done. Where the questions I'm gonna ask, I think, point to the questions that Julia raised, Michelle raised. Because but but because this is more of an internal document in a lot of ways around our systems. document in a lot of ways around our systems, it's, uh, less of a, and this is what this means in the classroom. Um, so I think going forward, it's going to, uh, behoove us to, to answer some of those questions and get more specific with some things in the document. I just want to throw a couple of those out in addition to, um, ones that are already out there. Uh, one example, um, would be around special education, which really isn't specifically called out, it mentioned, I think, once or twice in passing. Um, uh, inclusion, what I would call optimal inclusion is still a big issue. There's still a lot of segregation around, uh, special education services. How will that look differently in the next year or two? I know it's embedded in this, but it's not, uh, specifically in terms of communicating to a parent or a student, here's how we want your experience to be different and here's how, what we're doing to make it better. Same thing with rate and level, uh, learning per tag. We know there was an initial set of, uh, trainings on that and some steps being made to build that in. Um, what can I expect if I were the parent of a student, uh, with a tag plan? Um, what would I expect to, could I expect to see differently next year or over the next three years? How else my experience can be better? Uh, another issue that was kind of touched on, but because of the nature of the document not, uh, specifically called out, um, is the, uh, recruitment and retention of educators of color. Still would like to see, and I think the public would like to see, uh, kind of specific plans and structures around there. Uh, we know a lot of our staff of color feel isolated. Um, how, how do we break through that isolation? Also, uh, and, and I think it would, uh, I think that's, uh, I appreciate, um, you saying, these are some system shifts. We didn't directly address other s- system shifts. So I think we, as a board, should go back and review those out of the educational vision statement, uh, to see, well, which, which ones weren't specifically called out, not that they're being completely ignored, but weren't featured in this document. Um, I think that's, that's a great point to make. Uh, one piece that wasn't in here directly addressed is dual language immersion. So are we at a, um, keep at the current level or, uh, do we see that, uh, will enhancing, expanding DLI, um, or, or to enhancing multilingual experience of the opportunity to learn more than English? Will that be enhanced? Is that part of this plan? Uh, or is that, again, something to do later? We can't do everything right now, especially given our budget situation. Uh, those were, and finally, um, I think one silo that's still out there, um, is between facilities and education. I'm, I don't think we have, uh, a long-term facilities plan. Uh, we're still struggling with that and we see it as we're trying to figure out our bond work. And, and that's, that's an issue that, um, in terms of that cross-departmental stuff, um, I, I didn't see. I, I found it lacking in this document. Um, and I just have to say, uh, this resiliency bond on stuff, uh, the board has not decided what kind of bond we're going to have. And so for staff to refer to a short-term bond, um, it isn't, isn't helpful. It makes me feel like there's been a conversation I wasn't part of. And that, that's not where I want to be and that's not what I think happened. But it's like, wait, what, what, how, how did this train leave the station when I'm still buying a ticket? I don't know if that's the right metaphor or not. Boy, once you start a metaphor without an end, it gets me into trouble. So that's, that's a couple of, couple of things, but, uh, again, mostly huge. This, this is a, a big step moving us down the line.
Appreciate the questions, Director Bailey. I think we only gave you 30 pages. I'd love to give you another 10 on our career pipelines that are specifically targeting and the building of educators of color, leaders of color in our collaboration with the higher ads and other districts. Um, so what?
I, I know that's, I know that's happening. Um, I hope it didn't hit you. Okay. Yeah, um, it's just, uh, see, see, seeing the, seeing the plan, um, because that's, this, this is a subject that keeps coming up publicly.
No, I appreciate you highlighting that we need to, uh, as a more formal document emerges, that we pay attention to describing in some of these other areas you've listed, not being so light, uh, because work is continuing across the board in the district. Uh, we just chose to highlight a few areas. Uh, and then I don't think there was an intention to, uh, you know, to, to predetermine, uh, what direction the bond campaign goes because we understand fully that the board is still in active deliberation and conversation about that.
Thank you. Oh, um, the, the, I tried to do the link to the gap bond explanation, uh, because I get an explanation every 10 years and then I forget, uh, what exactly it is. Uh, and the link didn't work, just a note to staff. It was embedded in one of the documents. Uh, but thanks, thanks for at least putting a link in there. Uh, we can make it work and, uh, that's a good resource for board members to have. Uh, it's a little arcane, but it's, it would be great to have that explanation.
Ultimately, the goal would be to have a whole complementary set of communication collateral. So you could see very easily describe the vignettes from the point of view of the student or the teacher or the principal. So as the, as the, as the broader strategic plan document comes together, and we've had months to engage our educators and our students, you know, those are the kinds of pieces we get excited about making sure emerge, uh, that will be more timeless and, and, and paint a, a more clear picture about what it is that we're working towards.
So I'll, I'll, I'll jump in and I'll be quick because it's late. Um, but, um, appreciate sort of the conversation today and, uh, the comments and, and questions, uh, you know, and overall, I'll sort of hit this at a high level. I just, I really want to commend the superintendent and the staff, um, both for the budget message. I've, I've, I've crafted and delivered a lot of budget messages. This one is incredibly thorough and making me think I've been doing my job poorly, um, for a long time. So well done in terms of putting, putting it together and linking everything together in terms of the, the strategic plan and the vision and, and, and sort of outlining that. And I think we need to, we need to talk, um, uh, as a board about how we start talking about that out in the community, um, because there's so much there and it's going to be really valuable. Um, as we're going through a really, a really difficult budget year, and not just one, but probably multiple budget years, how do we, how do we translate that? Um, and, and, and assure people that we are maintaining a focus, e- even though we don't have the resources we thought. I also want to commend the superintendent and his staff on taking really quick action. Um, I think when we see the size of that shortfall, um, it's massive, but we also see the really quick things, whether it's the work share program, whether it's the contract freezes, the hiring freezes, et cetera, that, um, that have really mitigated some of those, some of those, um, impacts for next year. Um, the, the general fund budget cuts are still going to be significant. The reductions in SIA funding, um, are going to really hurt because of the plans we had for that. But, um, but that quick action, um, uh, really is, is going to help. We're going to be really grateful we did that. Um, the other thing I, I want to sort of stress, and this might be from my fellow board members as well, um, and some of my jobs begin to blend together a little bit, but we're going to be making these budget decisions in a constantly changing environment. Um, and, um, we are almost certainly going to need to adopt a budget, um, come, come June, both approve and adopt a budget that is not complete. Uh, and that's a hard thing, um, for a board to do. Um, but, um, I can almost guarantee the budget we adopt is going to change the day after we adopt. And that's just the nature of when this particular pandemic hit, um, when, uh, where we are in the budget cycle, um, one of the things I always like to say is that, um, the budget train moves fast and it moves slow, sometimes grindingly slow, but it always arrives on time because by law it has to. So we will approve a budget in June, uh, but we won't know, um, everything that we need to know. And so I think just recognizing that uncertainty and recognizing that what we adopt will change, um, and we won't have all the answers. And that means the community won't have all the answers either. Um, and that's just the nature of where we are. And then the other thing I wanted to just come back to was, I really appreciated, um, uh, Deputy Superintendent Hertz's focus on the long-term and, and not just the fiscal year 2021. Um, this could be a very long recovery. Even I was a little shocked to see the state forecast say it could be mid-decade before we really saw, um, you know, recovery. We'll have to wait and see, uh, what happens, but it could be a very long recovery. And, and I think that often, um, um, organizations in general, it's not just government, it's public and private sector organizations, um, make the mistake of focusing too intently on the short-term and, and trying to sort of move mountains in order to save a handful of positions or programs, um, through one-time resources or using reserves. And, and sometimes that actually does harm in the long run. And so, um, um, I think really thinking about this, not as a one-year budget, but what are the actions we're taking in 2021 that are going to set us up well in, in 21, 22, and, and 22, 23 is, is, is going to be really important and, and always be asking that questions that, that, again, saving a handful of positions now might actually do harm when we think about that, that long-term, um, and what we're going to have to deal with there. So anyway, overall, I think the, the budget messages and tonight's presentation conveys really strongly the district's thinking about this in a long-term holistic way. And so I just really appreciate, appreciate the work. And I can't say I'm looking forward to more discussions about, um, the cuts we're going to need to take, but, um, but I feel like we're in, we're in good hands moving forward and good position. So thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. We'll take that as a segue. Deputy Superintendent Hertz, if you're still with us, would you like to give a preview, um, to the next steps in this process?
Yes, I'm still here, but I was just texting someone that at 10:00, 10:00 PM, I turn into a pumpkin. So, um, next steps is...
She was texting.
So, um, Jonathan Garcia is, and his team are preparing, um, focus groups in a town hall for us to, um, process this budget and information with our community. So people are informed and understand, um, what, what's happening in terms of short-term and long-term. Appreciate Director Scott's, um, comments about, um, focusing on the long-term. I applaud, um, those comments. Um, but in terms of next steps, it is truly, um, looking at, um, what, what kind of input can we get from our community in this, um, uh, virtual world? So it'll be a little different than what we're used to, but we, we are, um, making those plans and they'll be coming out. Um, Jonathan Garcia, do you have, um, information about, uh, when those plans will be rolling out to the board?
Yes, uh, we, uh, by, by end of the week, we should have a better sense of, um, the timeline and the, the specific projects or the specific, uh, events, uh, that we are, are planning. So, uh, more information on that, uh, shortly.
I think we're currently looking at the budget town hall for June 8th. Is that right?
Yes.
That's right. So, uh, so I, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to give more detail. Um, I, I just, um, wasn't sure whether or not the board had to approve the calendar as is or with the new revisions. So, uh, again, I'm happy to share the details right now, um, as we are thinking, uh, or I can also do that in an email to the board as soon as we materialize a little bit more of the thoughts.
Email's great. Otherwise Claire's going to turn into a pumpkin.
So, so one question though, I have two questions before we sign off because I do feel, um, that we, we have a very condensed timeframe. I absolutely agree with Andrew that, um, the budget is, uh, so there are iterations times like this. I mean, that was never more true than in 2002. So I've been through the multiple changing budgets, um, but we have a document that we, we received that has $12 million in unspecified cuts. And then, uh, it looks like $17 million that is going to be in the student investment accounts and, and the ballot measure 98. And I'd like to know, when are we going to receive what those cut, those specific cuts are so we know what we're voting on? Because if we take the 2021 proposed budget, that's not what we're going to be voting on. And I guess I wouldn't, I'm not going to feel comfortable having a community conversation or voting on a budget without having the opportunity to see what things may, are going to be cut out of that plus, and then be cut out of the Student Investment Act and Ballot Measure 98, just so that we have a process in which even though those are hard, hard conversations when you're in a, uh, reductions mode, but that we just be transparent in, um, in, in, in what's going to be funded and what's not and what we're prioritizing. Um, so I guess I'm interested, when, when are we going to get that in, information? And hopefully it's not on, hopefully it's well in advance of June 8th.
It will be before the, um, forum, uh, the town hall. And so what, it's just the, we have a system of communications that we need to get through in order to, um, share, um, information throughout our system about, um, what those reductions will be. And so once we've got that communication in place, we never want someone to hear about a program reduction when they're a part of a program from a budget meeting. We want them to hear that, um, personally, um, from their supervisors. So that's something that we, we need to go through and, um, have that work completed. And then we will have information to the board and to the community prior to, um, the, um, town hall. And it will be, um, part of the information that will be, um, presented in the town hall as well.
So my, my second, my second question, um, that I just want to make sure and ask is, um, and have to ask it, um, so I don't think it's, um, going to be unexpected, but, um, Jonathan, you, you referenced the middle grades redesign. And, um, my question is, last year, the year before, the board put $4 million into that in sort of the final budget amendment. My question is, is who is, who is leading the middle grades redesign process? When are they going to be done? When is, is there a timeline for it to be completed? And are there any investments in this budget? I, I looked through it. I didn't, I didn't see anything, but also I, that may be something I couldn't have seen. So I'm just curious about those under enroll Ks that are still sitting out there. And I'm happy to take it offline as well, but those are the three questions I'd like to know about the middle, middle grades.
Sure, we can recall what we've shared with the board previously about it. Most recently, we described, uh, coordinator and a task force that, uh, are being set in place. Uh, uh, some of the work we've done exploring models out there, uh, some of the budget recommendations that are in these two volumes of books were to resource, uh, some of the work in schools, uh, in, in addition to Verizon grant funding. So, um, as we described the last time to the board, that works in motion and we're going to kick off at a pretty steady, quick rate, uh, especially in the first semester, knowing that Callog is, is quickly coming our way. Um, Dr. Valentino, if you're there, do you want to provide an additional minute of middle school redesign updates?
I can get it offline, but I'm, again, I, I'll send my very specific questions.
I think back on that point too, it's important to go back to the school profiles and back to the conversation about our staffing formula because we have made huge investments and I expect continue to make those same investments and commitments in middle grades equity, um, by, by really beefing up course selection in our K to eights. And it's, and, uh, there's a few threads in this budget proposal that indicate that we're not letting go of that.
That, that'd be great. I just, um, when I read, I read through it, I couldn't see that. And I'm interested in who specifically is going to lead that and be accountable for delivering that work.
Uh, it's a group of us, uh, Director Brim Edwards, and, and I'm keeping tabs on it as well.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, so much. And, um, Superintendent Hertz, Deputy Superintendent Hertz and Chief of Staff and all of you, all of you on the senior leadership team, um, we know that the conversation... We know that the conversations ahead regarding impacted departments and areas of work and employees are really, really difficult. And we appreciate the, the compassion that you're showing in, in your approach to those conversations. So thank you for that. We've got one last small order of business. We had a couple of board committee meetings. Director Scott, is there anything you want to relay from the bond committee meeting? Although I think just about all of us were there.
Yeah, I will just, yeah. So we, we, we had that meeting on, on May 19th and discussed options for 2020 and resiliency bond and what we want the focus to be and whether we want to make changes. And we had a great exercise with Danny, led us through the racial equity and social justice lens and then got the board feedback and then talked about community engagement. And I think we moved the conversation forward, but we're going to need to have another board discussion. And I think right now there's a proposal for June 11th at that, that board meeting to add the bond discussion for a full board discussion to, to settle on some, some options to take out to the
Thank you very much. And then Director Moore, do you have something to report from the policy committee other than the first reading that was brought forward tonight?
Nope, that's about it. There, there is still some other policies that are kind of in the works. There'll be at least one other policy coming to the full board probably after the next committee meeting for a first reading.
All right. Thank you very much. Anything else for the good of the order? All right. Thank you, everybody for hanging in there. This meeting of the Board of Education of Portland Public Schools is now adjourned. Good night, everybody. Take care.
Thanks, everybody.